I'm Ramon Duque, President of the Westlaco ISD Board of Trustees. This public hearing is being conducted in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least seventy-two hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public hearing, public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is six-ten, and I call this meeting to order. I will now begin the roll call, calling these board members by name, starting with Mr. Vicidero Nieto.
Present.
Jackie Susaita.
Present.
Josecito Trevino.
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez.
Present.
Mr. Martin Lo Santos.
Present.
And Mr. Andrew Gonzalez could not be here due to a death in the family. Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. Item three, Public Hearing on Proposed 2022-2023 Budget and Tax Rate. Dr. Corona.
Board President, members of the board, this is a public hearing regarding the 22-23 proposed budget. Hopefully, I can answer most of your questions in advance, and so we'll go ahead and get started. Our projected revenues, again, nearly one-hundred-and-seventy-nine million, a couple million more than the previous year, and again, expenditures, we have it right at the same. Again, you can see where we had about four million dollars, just over four million dollars, that we're going to carry over to our fund balance. In terms of the deficit budget for our INS, our projected revenues, about two-point-one million. We do have, we're going to need to supplement that with one-point-five million dollars, but we have that, and so we'll be in good shape. And again, that's just a high-level overview, and we'll get to the specifics on that next. So we have two options here. It's, I called this either being very bold or very crazy, and so here's what we're projecting. Again, we, our pre-K-three, pre-K-four enrollment has been significant, and along with our Head Start folks have already been preregistered at about twelve-hundred-and-twenty-five students. Of course, we only get half credit for those, so if we project enrollment, and here's where you're going to see some differences, if we project enrollment at sixteen-seventy-two, that would be a conservative approach, our budget at ADA at fifteen-seven. Now, I'm going to go, I may go back and forth with this, Elias, but the next option here, the crazy side or the conservative side, that we would increase our enrollment by, you know, two-hundred-plus more and then drop the ADA. If we miss these numbers, and I'll just say that, if we just miss the numbers, what we can do, we have a fallback, we have a safety net built in with ESER. We think that our 22-23 school year, it'll be a change year for us, a significant change year, mostly to the positive. But in the event, as a contingency, we've reserved some money from ESER to pay half the year for two grade levels. That's if we miss the mark. If we don't miss the mark, then that money, we're going to be able to keep anyway. But I did want to, I did want to kind of articulate that we're planning a contingency with the ADA. Given the way that the organization is structured now, with the focus on strictly attendance, getting our kids in school, and some of the other things that we're doing with no school supplies, no school list that's required, basically, we just want the kids to come. The uniform piece that we'll address later in the regular board agenda, we think that's going to have a significant impact, one, not only on our enrollment, but also the systems that we've designed to increase our attendance. And so that's why it's a little bit bold and a little bit crazy. I guess that's how I'm looking at it. But I firmly believe that in terms of what we're budgeting for our daily attendance and our enrollment, I really believe that we can hit those numbers with the team that we have. This is our proposed budget based on our current tax rate, which we won't see a significant change of, well, we won't see a change in our taxes, but our tax rate, but the property values have had just over an eleven-percent increase in values. Again, those values should come in here pretty soon to be finalized. So here's our current tax rate, and again, my recommendation will be to keep the tax rate for MNO and INS the same, so no new taxes, even though our property values have increased, so be no new taxes. In terms of our employee benefits, right now, all of our employees receive a twenty-five-thousand-dollar term life insurance benefit. It costs us a dollar-twenty per employee per month with no cost incurred to our employees. Now, there was a ten-percent increase to our employee contribution for the medical, only the medical benefit. So in other words, we were paying five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars for every employee's contrib- the district's contribution to our employee's benefit, health benefit, was five-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars. That rate, I'm sure there's a lot of factors on why our insurance costs are going up, but that rate was increased to six-hundred-and-forty dollars. So we're going to pick up the tab on that. I mean, there was a recommendation earlier that that be passed on to the employee, but we're going to take care of that. It's going to cost us about one-point-five million dollars to pay for that increase across the board, so we're not going to take, we're not going to put that on the employee. We'll go ahead and take care of that, so they will see no increase in their employee, in their health benefit contribution from their side. Here's one of the challenges, and this is a challenge that just about every district in the state and country is facing right now, is that the proposed budget does not include any type of funding. As you know, our MNO is really not designed for our capital projects, and so, but we do need some roofing, and we have some other, and we're going to talk about this next, but we do, we probably really need to look at our roofs, and we have some other facility projects. Again, there's the three funding options. We can do a maintenance tax note, which we right now have about twenty-six million dollars worth on the MNO side. We can pass a bond. The last bond we passed was in two thousand and eight, so it's been about fourteen years for the bond. Or we can go to our fund balance, which is pretty healthy right now, and that's a great safety net for us, too. But we do have a need for our capital outlay improvements to include, what we really want to do is create the vestibules on our campuses to control access. Yvada has a great one, and so we'd like to mirror it with that on most of our campuses. We just applied for a COPS grant to do that, which is about four-hundred-thousand dollars, we should know in a few weeks, if we get that, if we earn that, but a lot of that is going to be used for those vestibules. And of course, we talked about the HVAC projects that we're going to use strictly with our ESER-two and ESER-three funding. The next slide, you'll see some of the Tier One projects, and what we did was, you know, the Tier One projects are what we really need to do right now. I mean, this is critical that we need to do. Right now, we're lucky because it just hasn't rained. I guess I should knock on wood for that, because I haven't been here during the rainy season, so let's hope it comes. But we really need some roof projects done at three elementaries, three middles, and then, of course, with the high school here in Central Office. Again, our HVAC with our controls, it's an immediate need. Tier One, it's imminent, in other words. The central middle school gym needs attention, and evidently, that's been kind of passed along, along with the original Horton building. Those are two things that we need to make a decision on, at whether or not we want to keep them, we want to level them, and just abate whatever we need to do. We also have the ag farm facility. We considered, there was a proposal on the table last year. My understanding was that a very large, nice building to replace the current ag farm, and that cost went from seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand all the way to four million dollars. So what we thought about is, we have enough land at Westlaco East and Westlaco High to build two smaller ag facilities. That way, the kids in FFA can go ahead and take care of their farms at their campus. Now, we reduce transportation, we reduce them getting on the bus, we just, we keep them on their campus, and they basically just walk to the facility. And those are secured places already, and they're monitored pretty much twenty-four-seven anyway. So we looked at the cost, and it was actually cheaper to do two facilities versus one large facility, and then it's closer to the campus, and it keeps the kids there. We do have campus marquee signs, and that'll be later on in the agenda to put out for an RFP, and then we're looking at two pavilions. Now, the Tier Two projects really need to get done, too, but I guess, I don't want to say we want to put them on the back burner, but we really just want to take a look at some of these projects. You know, as, most districts are facing some deferred maintenance issues right now, and this is just through time. I mean, fourteen years since the district has passed a bond, it's going to take a toll on our facilities. So you can see some of the Tier Two projects that are there. Our employee compensation, again, as discussed on May seventeenth, we provided a seventeen-hundred-dollar pay raise for teachers and a three-percent pretty much across the board, based on their midpoint, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. The pay raises, again, for all funds, cost us about three-point-eight million dollars, just over three-point-eight million dollars. The one-point-one million dollars for the payroll adjustments, what that did was, I call it an autocorrect. So that autocorrect system, it brought up some of our salaries for our, specifically our hourly employees, up to a level where we're competitive. So we needed to make those corrections on our own, and so that was about, at the cost of about one-point-one million. And again, we also allocated about two million dollars for substitute pay. We think that, you know, with COVID going on the down, you know, there's still some variants out there, but with COVID and the COVID days, you know, again, last year, we spent about two-point-one million dollars, so we've allocated two million dollars just for substitutes as well.
Dr. Corona, may I ask you a question?
Yes, of course, of course.
Now that you say employee compensation, I've gotten this question a few times, and just as a refresher, because I know we talked about the stipends from ESER for the teachers, the retention stipends, and I've gotten questions, hey, are we getting one this year? And I know that we said it was for the next three years last year, but as a refresher, because I kind of forgot, I think we said seven thousand, correct, for employee retention stipend over the three years? Wasn't it three? Can somebody refresh us with that? Because that's the question.
There was a discussion at one point where there was three thousand year one, two thousand year two, and two thousand year three, but then I think we had a meeting where you disclosed to everyone that you were going to-
To do the pay raise.
Right, to do a pay raise.
Because it was sustainable.
And redirect funds from stipends, stipends to project, capital projects that will get a longer return on the investment as far as the AC systems and whatnot, and so instead of doing the actual stipend, which doesn't affect employees' retirement, we're going to do pay raises.
Right.
Okay, so they're not using that stipend, it's being rerouted.
That's correct. And then with the stipends, you know, it's, what we're really trying to do, even with our stipended amount, is we want to make their salaries TRS credible, you know, and so, and that may not pay, that may not be important if you're twenty-four years old and you've been a teacher for three years, but it does, it says a lot over time, especially when you can make all of your salary TRS credible, and that's what you really want. And so that's the direction that we were going to go.
Okay, so we'll see the pay raises instead of the retention stipend.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
So this slide here is, I know it's, it looks like a busy slide, so I want to, I want you to pay attention to the bottom-right number, the four-point-six million dollars. So for the year twenty-one, twenty-two, through natural attrition, or people that left through retirement, resignations, or other ways of leaving, we've had two-hundred-and-twenty-one teachers and/or employees actually leave the district. So that was a cost of about just over eleven million dollars, and we had to fill many of those vacancies. And so some vacancies, we chose just not, we just closed them completely, we closed the position during a reorganization for the district. So we're going to actually save about four-point-six million dollars just in salaries. So as compared to the previous year, the previous year, it was about, let's see if I, one-hundred-and-sixty-two, now we're down to about one-hundred-and, let's see, so we're paying about one-hundred-and-sixty-two million, which is four million dollars less than what we paid than the previous year. That's basically how that works out. This is our track record for our pay raises. And then this is this year's pay raise, seventeen-hundred dollars for teachers, nurses, and librarians, or professional staff, professional, paraprofessional manual trades, is three-percent from their midpoint, and again, there are bus drivers, twenty-dollar minimum. And again, I want to reiterate something here, because I know we get a lot of questions, well, what happens if I've been a bus driver and I only make eighteen dollars an hour? Then your pay will be boosted beyond the twenty-dollar minimum, so it reflects your longevity here in the district. So no one's just going to, so you're, so in other words, you're going to make more than a starting bus driver. And right now, it will help me, you, we have fifteen applicants right now?
We have about seventeen applicants. Four of them are for that intermediate program that we have, we do our own training in-house, so we're getting a lot of buzz from neighboring districts coming over. We do have, we do have some applicants right now.
So we're in a good spot with our bus drivers, and I think having the salary increase for the bus drivers is probably the biggest plus.
What about sir, the, if you can go back to the previous slide, I get this question a lot, well, how much am I going to get? What is the, let's say I'm a professional. What is three percent from the pay grade midpoint? How do they find out?
It's our, actually, our compensation plan is going to be posted on our website tomorrow, once approved, subject to your approval tonight. It'll be posted online tomorrow.
So they can go online and say, okay, this is where I fall, this is the midpoint, this is three percent from that midpoint?
Yes.
And they find out how much they're paying, Chrissy, is, thank you.
And this is where we stand with all of the other salaries. Again, you know, fifty-two-eight, I still think we're one of the highest, if not the highest. We're trying, people are trying to keep up with us. If they can't do pay raises, they're offering free school supplies, so, you know, so we're doing some really good things with what we're doing. So I still think our salaries are great. I think the other thing was that our stipended amounts are very valuable to our teachers, especially if they go beyond the classroom. Now, here's what we've done as well. We've allocated one-point-eight million dollars in the budget for vacancies. Now, there's thirty-seven vacant positions that we're going to fund. Again, we're taking either a bold approach or a crazy approach, because we're anticipating some growth. If we grow, we have the money, we, there's no pulling money, there's no, what are we going to do? Because it's going to take a while for our TEH checks to come in to represent that growth, so we want to make sure that we don't have to do a budget amendment and allocate and reallocate for positions due to growth. So we've allocated thirty-seven positions, or funding for thirty-seven positions, in the event that we want to grow. Now, some of these, I would say, I think right now, we are on track to fill three of these thirty-seven positions, but that still leaves quite a bit of money in the bank for us so that we can draw from in the event we need to expand at a fast pace.
So it's already included in the-
It's already included in our budget, right. So let's say we crash and burn, well, then we have one-point-eight million dollars that we didn't use.
Right.
But we're not going to crash and burn. And again, this is our interest in sinking our debt service, so we're down to about four-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. We're going to, we're going to have to pass a bond here pretty soon, probably within the next year or two, to try to maintain our INS rate, just kind of keep that out there. And then this is our timeline, this has been our timeline for the budget and our process. It has been interesting. I've been here for less than ninety days, and talk about hitting the ground running, especially with all of the things that have to happen in the month of April, May, and now June, and with no board meeting in July, we've uploaded everything from July, we've taken a lot of stuff from August and July, and we moved it in June, so I apologize upfront for all of the items that are on this particular agenda, but I feel confident in what we're doing as a district and moving forward. So that completes the budget proposal, and subject to your questions, if you have any.
As far as security and monitoring, you know, that's a big concern right now with many parents and staff. Do we have, do you think, the proper plan of what we're going to do with the project funds for what we need there?
You know, that's a great question, Mrs. Ita. So we have double the amount of security guards than most districts have. Even in the Tasby study, their recommendations that we cut half of the security, and ironically, you know, two weeks after that, the situation in Uvalde occurred, and we were going to make no changes to our security team anyway. We think one of the, we've done some homework regarding training, we've done some homework regarding our entrance facilities, cameras, I mean, we've taken a very holistic approach to our buildings and infrastructure. And again, I think that creating the vestibules that we have are significant. I think the COPS grant, I'm confident that we'll get that, that's four-hundred-thousand dollars to create that. I know we're looking at other, I guess, structures to put in front of our buildings so that we stop traffic right there. You know, I guess what I wrestle with, and I'll be the first to say, you know, and I'm probably not the only superintendent in the country that thinks about this, I don't know what the answer is. You know, I don't. I wish I did. It's, you know, one of the things that I said to the team was, how do you make a prison welcoming? We want our schools to be welcoming, we want our schools to be open, we want our schools to just be part of the family, but, you know, we're going to go through all of these steps just to get into the campus, so where's the balance at? So I think we're looking at a lot of different things right now, where we can just kind of control traffic, really. That's human traffic, foot traffic, vehicle traffic, whatever we can control for access, because that seems to be the biggest challenge for all buildings is access.
Dr. Corona.
Yes?
Last year, when we, last year, I think it's a memorandum of understanding that we have with Westlaco PD, MOU, I asked, I asked the administration at the time, we currently have officers at junior highs and high schools, and I asked them if we could expand that to elementaries last year. But I know there's, they're full-time employees, I know there's a lot of, there's costs involved, and at the time, they said that they were going to evaluate to see what the total cost would be to expand it to the eleven elementaries, I think, that we still have, that don't have armed officers there. Is that something that you all can look at? Because I know we currently have that for junior highs and high schools, is that something that we can, like, again, I'm asking, is that something that we can afford to expand to our elementary campuses?
You know, we can. I think we have to ask ourselves a question on whether or not, do we want our security guards or do we want armed police? So if we want the police, then are we going to let go of our security force that we have now? So I think that's a question that we're going to, that's, again, you know, making personnel changes, it's a tough choice.
Right.
You know, I think we can look at it and find out what the cost is going to be, and then see what happens with our security forces as, in terms of how they attrit, you know? That's something, you know, there was an article that was just recently published and that it's whether or not armed guards can stop, can actually hinder an actual shooting, and the answer was no. So there's studies, either or. Again, I wrestle with this every day, is how do we make our schools safe, welcoming? And, you know, because as educators, we just want to be able to create a safe learning environment, safe from not only our physical threat, but also, you know, an emotional threat as well. So it's something that we have to look at, and we can look at the armed, having armed police officers and having an MOU, and a lot of it is contracted through constables, sheriff's office, and everything else, so, but we can look at, we can look at a variety of things.
Okay.
The reason I had brought that up was, because of that, it was in the news recently, you know, that some districts were hiring, and as a parent myself, and I know I'm speaking for a lot of parents in the district, I feel safer with my kid, having my kids, whether it does or it doesn't deter somebody from going onto the campus, we don't know, right? Because maybe somebody might say, okay, there's a police officer there, I know I'm not going to go over with a gun in. But as a parent, and I read comments on, you know, online, people feel safe having their, most people, not everybody, but a lot of people do feel safe having these armed officers outside, monitoring, and not necessarily having to be inside, so-
The deterrent.
As a deterrent.
The other option, again, is not just the entrance, and this is something that Texas has put out, is the school marshal program, where you arm your teachers, you know? I don't know how many people feel about that, you know, but, you know, it's, that's another-
They're touchy subjects.
They're very, I mean, to have, to have guns in school is a touchy subject.
Yeah.
And it's kind of, you know, it's, it, would you walk into a place knowing that everybody was armed? Probably not, you know? So whether it's a police officer or whether, that campus, they're crazy, they all carry guns, you know? So you're probably, you know, you got to just know when you're outgunned, and so I think just from my own experience, is, that's another, that's another option, you know, and that if you want to explore, we can explore that, too. That's probably the cheaper option.
Because with, last year, when I brought it up, the issue was full-time employees and the cost, right, the benefits, et cetera, and everything. But you're right, I did talk to some individuals at the Hidalgo County Sheriff's Department, and they do have programs where the officers work a certain number of days, and the other days they're off, so they're out there contracted and working by the hour. So you could either do Westlaco PD, Hidalgo County Sheriff's Department, constables, et cetera, so you could have them rotating, and you'll pay an hourly fee, and it's contracted through them, and they have programs and documentation, and then that way, like, there's not a price for safety.
No, there's not.
You know, as me, I'm a parent, I have my kids here, I have family here, I have family that work here. I mean, I did the math, I mean, if it comes up to sixty thousand dollars an officer, eleven campuses, we're looking at- dollars an officer, eleven campuses, we're looking at, and I know it sounds a lot, but looking at a large budget, an extra seven hundred thousand dollars to have somebody there, I just don't think there's a price, you know? I, I'm the type of person, I'd rather have the need, and, and, you know, I just appreciate if the administration really looks into all the different options.
Okay. Well, so what I'll do is, in August, I'll come back with, with what that cost will be.
Thank you.
Okay?
Along those lines, is there a, a protocol that will be taken to, to prepare campuses for possibilities of somebody?
So, we, we are revamping our, our E O P, which is our emergency operating procedures that, that we have. And we have, we are contracting with crisis training, critical crisis training. Jesús Vier Edmosa, he is, he's coming on September fifth and October thirty-first to train our teachers and staff, do a threat assessment. And obviously, he's booked in August, and so the phones ran off the hook for him. A popular, popular person right now. But he is doing, he is coming down on September fifth to train half of our staff, and then the other half will be trained on October thirtieth. So, but we are looking at that as well.
And just to make sure, if we do get the COPS grant, that can also cover money to pay, to cons, uh, pay armed officers in case they would choose to do that?
Well, I think the way we wrote it in the grant was to the vestibules first.
Oh, vestibules first.
Uh, is that, is that correct? Yeah, just the vestibules first.
Equipment and technology that's gonna help deter any entrance or traffic into the campus.
Okay.
So, as Dr. Coronado mentioned, the vestibule, security cameras, door locks, we're looking at, you know, different options.
Okay.
That were available based on the grant options.
Okay.
And for those listening, can you explain that for the public in case they don't understand the design of what you're trying to do?
The vestibules, so if anybody's ever been to Yavata Elementary, when you walk in, you're not going left or right. You're, you're, the security guard didn't know who I was, and I didn't go left or right. I had to just stay right there until he found out who I was. And then he goes, oh, yeah, you can go, sir. I said, okay. But basically, you are, you are contained in a very small area before you're allowed to get to the campus. Many of our campuses, you walk in and you can go anywhere you want. You go to Margot, for example, you're halfway into the school just to get to the front office. And so, we want to be able to, to stop the traffic at the entrance, and again, be welcoming and be greeted, but at the same time, is not allow high traffic to, to roam the schools. So, that vestibule is just a, a, a safe space to contain.
And those are in, in the works.
Those are in the works. Yes, sir.
And also, also our, I think our door systems. Mr. Garcia presented on that as well, too, the exterior door, doors, they're gonna have systems that are being, that are gonna be put into place where they automatically lock. And there's also a card access?
So, right now, all of our elementary schools are like that right now.
Right.
Yes.
And is that on the middle schools?
The middle schools are working that. So, high schools are tough because they're so, our high schools are very large buildings. And that's, I won't bring that up yet, but that, that's another one, so.
Lockdowns? If, if, what's, what's the ratio, that we practice lockdowns? Once a month or, what's a district's protocol?
So, it's, it's an annual requirement. I don't know if campuses do it more than once a year, though.
Those drills?
Biannual?
The drills.
Like the active shooter drills or something like that?
Yeah.
Those active shooter drills?
Biannual, so twice a year.
It should be twice a year.
Twice, once per semester. Once per, fire drill.
Fire drill once per month. Lockdown drills and everything, once per semester.
One per semester, man.
And there's sometimes that you can incorporate your fire drill with a lockdown or vice versa. You know, that just, you can do that. Most, a lot of schools go four times a year, practice two in the, in the fall and two in the spring, you know, just for safety measures.
And if they're not, I hope they start.
But, you know, there's a lot of things that are, you know, the, in terms of a lockdown drill, you know, with every, with every mass shooting, we learn something new.
Right.
And, and all of this gets put out. So, a lot of them are no longer lockdowns. It's put a chair through the window and get out.
Right.
You know, so there, there's a variety of things, and that's our training here on, on September fifth and October thirtieth.
Okay.
For those actions.
And I know we had talked about previously, we had talked about glass hammers and, and for, for the classrooms because our windows don't open.
I, I've brought.
And we had talked about bindos.
Yes, we, we talked about having buckets, go buckets, basically ready to go with, you know, rags, tourniquets, hammers. I, I mean, just, that, that's your go bucket, and, and just have them in every classroom. And if you gotta break the window, you gotta break the window.
Right.
So, just get out.
I don't have windows in my classroom.
Yeah, yeah. No, they, a lot of campuses are doing that now. The, the hammers that you specifically shatter glass.
Right.
And that way, they can get students out of classrooms if they need to, because a lot of our campuses, depending on the age, don't have windows that open.
Right.
And so, sometimes it's hard for a chair, et cetera.
Yeah.
Or the person, maybe, that's in the classroom, or maybe it's a young child to break that window. So, you have a glass hammer, they can, your adult can break it and get everybody out.
Board President, subject to any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Public comments and proposed twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three budget and tax rate?
Nobody has signed up.
We have none. Item five, adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn. The time now is six forty. We now will go to a regular board meeting. Are we ready to go?
Ready.
Good evening. I'm Armando Cuellar Jr., president of the Westco I S D Board of Trustees. This regular board meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Greg Abbott's suspension of certain open meeting law requirements to the extent necessary to allow for telephonic and video conference meetings in response to COVID-nineteen. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least twenty-two hours. The board is meeting by the use of Google Meets and telephone transmission, which allows two-way communication for members of the public during public comments. A recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. The time now is six forty, and I call this meeting to order. I'll now begin the roll call. Colleagues, board member by name. Mr. Isidoro Nieto.
Present.
Mrs. Jackie Isidora.
Present.
Coach Jackie Trevino.
Present.
Dr. Jaime Rodriguez.
Present.
Mr. Marcos de los Santos.
Present.
Mr. de los Santos could not attend the meeting due to a family death. Let the record show that a quorum of board members are in attendance. Item three, invocation. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to bring up Mr. Elias Trevino. He is our Assessment and Accountability Director.
Let us bow our heads and let us pray. Heavenly Father, our Lord Jesus Christ, we come before your mighty throne of glory to honor, praise, and glorify you. Thank you for the opportunity to gather in the setting joyful that we gather face to face. Thank you for your faithfulness, providence, and protection over the lives of our students, staff, and families. Father, we ask that you continue to bless and grant greater wisdom to our superintendent, Dr. Dino Coronado, for his heart towards our most important resource, our students. Thank you for our board members, President Armando Cuellar Jr., Vice President, Dr. Jaime Rodriguez, Secretary Jesse Trevino, Trustee Isidoro Nieto, Trustee Jacqueline Sistita, Trustee Andrew Gonzalez, and Trustee Marcos de los Santos. Bless them and their families beyond measure for their service and sacrifice for our community. Their efforts and accomplishment for the betterment of our students, I am certain, is in your memory, Lord. Father, may your will be done in our board meetings. Bless our administrators with wisdom, integrity, patience, and the physical and mental strength in the midst of these trying times. Bless us all with strong support from parents, teachers, and the community. Above all, bless all our students with divine protection, physical and mental health and providence. May nothing lack in their homes. May their homes be filled with love and support. We pray, we pray that you grant us the opportunity to see all of our students again, and that they and all of our staff return safely. We ask you all this in your precious and mighty name of Jesus, and everyone says amen.
Amen.
Aguria. Item four, pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge. Dr. Coronado?
Mr. John Garlick is going to lead us in our Texas pledge.
If everyone could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garlick.
Item five, awards and recognitions. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and, and members of the board, I'd like to introduce Mr. Carlos Robledo.
Good evening, Dr. Coronado, President Cuellar, members of the board. We had a great, fantastic end of the year with extracurricular activities and athletic events, and we'd like to recognize some of our students here tonight. How about if we have a big hand for some students as they walk in? Let's go ahead and ask them to come in. These are members of our district U I L academic team.
We got one, two, three, four, five.
And we have members here who are from the, from West Loco East High School, from District thirty-two-five-A. Several of our students went on to compete at the regional and state levels. Are these also West Loco High School as well? West Loco High School and West Loco East. So, we're gonna recognize them both here this evening together. We'll start off with West Loco East High School from District thirty-two, five-A. The journalism team won a district championship. Team members are Luis Zuniga. As I say your name, if you could please step forward, Luis Zuniga. How about a big hand for Mr. Zuniga? Also on the journalism team, we have Victor Palacios. Xenia Alanis. Also on the journalism team that won a district championship, we have Paisley Garza. Not present. And also we have Eric Samora. Let me talk a little bit more about these individuals. Luis Zuniga won first place in editorial writing. Victor won first place in news writing. Eric won first place in copy editing. Xenia Alanis won third place in news writing. In feature writing, Paisley won second place and fifth place at regionals and advanced to state as a second alternate. She also placed third in copy editing. So, once again, congratulations, district championship for our journalism team from West Loco East High School. Also winning the district championship is the literary criticism team, and I'd like to recognize those members. We'll start off with Christina Moreno. Not here. Lizette Ortega. Out of town. Alia Mesa. And we got Ruby Espinoza. I'd like to recognize Christina, who won first place in literary criticism. And you said Ruby Espinoza went to state? Congratulations. Congratulations. Coaches are Juan Salinas. And also like to recognize Joe Ramos over here. If their parents are here, can they please stand? Parents, can you please stand and be recognized? Parents, or be students? Now, from West Loco High School, who, they compete in District thirty-two-six-A. And we're gonna start off, as I say your name, if you can please step forward, we're gonna recognize, we have Mia Mata, who competed in poetry. Mia, not present. Anna Valderas and Anna Rodriguez competed in literary criticism. Okay. Got them both there. And then also competing in ready writing was Abigail Chavez. Competing in spelling, Angel Guerra. Not present. Winning first place in spelling at U I L, Kaylee Luna. Would also like to recognize the journalism team from West Loco High School. They place second at district. Team members are Ashley Valero. Clarissa Hasso. Yana Siller. Alan Garcia. And Natalie Lozoya. Ashley won first place in news writing, third place in feature writing. Ashley qualified for regionals in these events. Clarissa placed second in headline writing and feature writing, third in news writing. Qualifying for regionals was Clarissa. Alan won third place in headline writing, also qualifying for regionals. The computer science team won the district championship and qualified for regionals. And let me recognize those team members. Iris Acevedo, she's not present. Angel Guerra. Diego Pineda. Mateo Houston. Not present. Iris placed first, Angel placed second, Mateo placed third, and Diego won first place in the freshman category. I'd like to recognize the coaches. Coaches are Dr. Monica C. Fuentes Walker, Edna De La Cruz, and Marco Tirado. Do we recognize all our students? Everybody got recognized? Yes? Clarissa made it to state. Congratulations, Clarissa. If the parents are here for the students from West Loco High School, they could please stand and be recognized. Parents. All right. Thank you very much, students. Congratulations. Y'all may exit this way.
Great job, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
Great job.
Up next, we would like to recognize some of our students who participate in folklorico. How about a big hand as they enter the room? Tonight, we want to congratulate members of the Danzantes del Valle Folklorico Dance Company. Our students earned a Division One for their outstanding performance at the Festival de Mexico National Folkloric Competition. The students were judged by a panel of maestros, masters, from Mexico, who are experts in the field of folklorico. They represent both West Loco East and West Loco High School. So, as I say your name, if you can please step forward, okay? We'll start off with Tatiana Aguirre. Hector Amaya. Present. Juan Camacho. Cassie Flores. Daniela Flores. Isabella Hernandez. Rita Hasso. Emily Marine. Alan Olivares. Desiree Ortiz. Ava Silva. Veronica Torres. And we'd also like to recognize the director, Angie Cordosa Olivares. And if their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents? All right. Once again, congratulations. Fine job. You may exit this way. All right. We're gonna continue on with some more recognitions. Up next, how about a big hand for some of our athletes who also part of the academic team, all academic team? How about a big hand as they enter the room? So, tonight, we want to congratulate several high school athletes who were recently named on the Academic All-State Honor Roll. These students were selected by the Texas High School Coaches Association for their academic excellence. All right. How you guys doing? All right. So, as I say your name, if you could just please step forward so I could recognize you. And you all are from West Loco High School? Do we have anybody here from West Loco East High School? Do we have anybody here from West Loco East High School as well? Okay. So we're going to start off with West Loco High School. And we're going to start off with our individuals in boys track. Academic All-State Honorable Mention Distinctions goes to Noah Gonzalez. Angel Contreras. Norberto Hernandez. Gabriel Ray. Making Academic All-State Second Team, Damian Casas. We also have members of our baseball team here. In baseball, making the Academic All-State Team First Team, Michael Trevino. J.D. And Christopher Casares. We'd like to also congratulate the coaches and also parents. Parents, if you're here, can you please stand and be recognized? All right, gentlemen, congratulations. You may exit this way. How about another big hand as they exit the room? All right. Come on in. We're going to recognize our next group of high school students here. Come on in. How about a big hand as they enter the room? All right. All right. So you all are track athletes, right? Okay. Just want to make sure we're on track here. I'm missing a group here, but we'll get to them. Maybe they didn't show up. Okay. So tonight, we want to congratulate the high school track athletes for a great season. Several track members won district championship in several individual events and went on to compete in area and regionals. And as I say your name, if you could please step forward. We'll start off from West Loco East High School, District 32-5A. Regional qualifiers in the relay, Evan Mascoro. Raymond Vazquez. Gianni Ortiz. Jesse James. Regional qualifier in the 100-meter dash, Gael Romo. District champion in the discus, David Trevino. We'd also like to recognize their coaches. We have head coach Tom Owens, with assistants Ottawa Perryman, Noel Villarreal, J.P. Echavarria, Orlando Gomez, David Cortez, and Mark Knuckles. Congratulations, coaches. We also want to recognize our students from West Loco High School, who competed in District 32-6A. We'll start off with boys track. Regional qualifier in the 400 and the 800, Jared Cavassos. Not present. Regional qualifier in the 100-meter dash, John Garcia. Regional qualifier in the pole vault, Ethan Urbina. Regional qualifier in the high jump, Jake Ramirez. District champion and regional qualifier in the high jump, Michael Vela. Let me recognize the coaches before we move on to the ladies. We'll start off with head coach Gus Cabrero. Cabrera, I'm sorry, with assistants Juan Davila, John Zapata, Roel Sanchez, Roman Marquez, Andrew Contreras, and Joey Leal. In girls track, regional qualifier in the discus, Cassandra Gonzalez. Regional qualifiers in the 200-meter relay and district champions, area champions, and regional qualifiers in the 100-meter relay, we have Yasmin Knob. Not present. Rebecca Becerra. And Sadie Romero. Not present. We'd also like to recognize, let's recognize, a district champion and regional qualifier in the high jump, Jada Huff. Not present. District champions and regional qualifiers in the 400-meter relay, Kalissa Cavassos. She's not here. Rebecca Becerra. Maya Pugh. And Kennedy Vialpando. All right. So at this time, we'd like to recognize the head coach, Pablo Almaguer, Liliana Skelitsky, Billy Rivera, Jaime Cavassos, Alexis Valle, and Amanda Cadenha. How about a big hand for our coaches? All right. And parents, if parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Parents of these athletes? All right. Congratulations. Y'all may exit this way.
He should be the supporter. Yeah.
Congratulations, boys.
Good job, boys.
Up next, we'd like to recognize our ladies from West Loco High School softball team. How about a big hand as they enter the room? Tonight, we want to congratulate the West Loco High School Lady Panthers for their winning season. These young ladies brought home the 32-6A district championship, as well as the Class 6A Bi-District Championship and Area Championship titles. And they weren't done, taking a long, deep run into the playoffs. They were regional quarterfinals and semifinal champions as well. Their overall record was 34-8, and the Lady Panthers were recently nominated for the All Valley Sports Girls Team of the Year in the Rio Grande Valley. So now, we're going to recognize you individually, so as I say your name, if you could please step forward, so we can recognize you. We'll start off with Kalissa Isaguirre. We also like to recognize All Academic Distinction, Emily Galván. All Academic Miranda Ponteleon. All Academic Daisy Inohosa. All Academic Madison Lopez. 32-5A Flex Player of the Year, Kira Sosa. All District First Team First baseman, Romy Núñez. First Team Second baseman, All Academic Mia Rodríguez. First Team Third baseman, All Academic Alexis Solís. All District First Team Shortstop, All Academic Lexi Escamilla. First Team All District Right Fielder, All Academic Elizabeth Craig. First Team Left Fielder, All Academic Julie Rodríguez. 32-6A Freshman of the Year, All Academic Lola Reyes. District Defensive Player of the Year, All Academic Stacy Bautista. 32-6A Offensive Player of the Year, All Academic, and 6A All-State Team, Jules García. 32-6A Most Valuable Player, All Academic, and 6A All-State Team, Kat Reyes. We'd also like to recognize seniors Katia or Kat Reyes, Jules, and Julie, as they will be part of the East-West All-Star Softball Team. We'd also like to recognize our coaching staff, who are here. We have head coach Mario Rodríguez, with assistance Daniel Inohosa. Cruz Morales. Rolando Rodríguez. David Ortiz. Haley Hernández. And Rebecca Reyna. And we'd also like to recognize the parents. How about parents, if you stand up and be recognized? I know they did a lot of traveling this past year with you guys. So once again, congratulations on a great season. It was fun.
Way to go, girls!
Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen.
Congratulations.
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 I think that was it.
Let's continue with the item six, proclamations. Dr. Gordonell?
We have none, sir.
Hey.
Hello.
You understand the process, but let's follow through with it. Identify yourself and give your address.
I'm sorry?
Identify yourself and give your address.
Oh, good afternoon, members of the board, Mr. Board President. My name is Edward Mejia, as you know, and my address is here in West Loco for the past 35 years.
Okay. I'm going to read a little script, and then we'll follow. Pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, the Board of Trustees may not deliberate on any comment made by a member of the public on a subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of this meeting. As per the Texas Attorney General, the scope of board discussion for a subject not part of the meeting agenda is limited to only a proposal by a board member to place the subject on a future board agenda. Specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries, but the board shall not deliberate or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the agenda posted with notice of the meeting. Audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated for that purpose. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless recognized by the presiding officer. No public comment presentation shall exceed five minutes. Any disruptive behavior by any speaker may result in the speaker's removal from participation in the meeting. Please be mindful of using names or personally identifiable information, as there is no immunity from defamatory comments while participating in public comments. You have five minutes, sir.
I'm only going to need 10 seconds, because I'm going to defer my public comments to next meeting, because this afternoon, thanks to one of your staff members, I was given an opportunity to speak about my concerns, so I'm going to go in and defer my open public comments, so my concerns are addressed privately. So thank you for the opportunity anyway for me to come before y'all. I appreciate it, and thank you for letting me come before, but I'm going to go in and wait.
Thank you. Item eight, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Gordonell?
For President and members of the board, first, I'd like to introduce the new team as you see it, and so I just want to make sure I introduce everybody correctly with their new titles, their roles. But our first, as you know, we reorged the district. We now have a deputy superintendent. Our deputy superintendent, my number two, which really is my number one, because he's my go-to, is Mr. Abel Aguilar. We also now have two assistant superintendents for school leadership, one for Team Panther, one for Team Wildcat. Team Panther is Mr. Daniel Buttermer. And brand new to the district, another assistant superintendent for school leadership for Team Wildcat is Ms. Beatriz Solano. Welcome to West Loco ISD. Another assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and innovation, again, from outside, brand new to West Loco ISD, is Ms. Lisa Gomez. And then we have two, I have two other direct reports. One of them is somebody well-known to our district, our athletic director, Mr. Freddy Freddy, Desi, Gordy, however you want to call him, right? A.D., okay? The other one is our new executive director for district communication, which is not new to the district, is Mr. Carlos Robledo. Under our deputy superintendent, but part of the district leadership team, we have four executive directors. Our first executive director is Dora Lisa Savala for Human Resources. Executive Director for Business and Finance, Mr. Andrés Sanchez. Executive Director for Maintenance and Operations, Mr. Amerco Garza. And our executive director for Technology is Mr. Carlos Martinez. So that's my dream team, and so far, we've had a lot of fun, and we're getting ready to get busy here. Well, I'm getting ready to get busy. I think they have been busy, so. Okay. So we'll go right into our presentation for our COVID-19 updates. Again, so we're starting to peak just a little bit with students due to summer school, so we have about 17, so we see a little upward trend. With that, we'll keep monitoring that situation before we have to make any other decisions. Staff has stayed relatively low. This is by campus. Again, we only have a handful of campuses that have summer school right now. And this is how we compare to the rest of the Rio Grande. Our enrollment, you know, we've been monitoring this basically by the week. The last week of school, we took a dive, probably had a lot to do with the school and safety. I'm glad we ended when we ended. Many of the school districts, neighboring school districts, didn't even finish out their year, and they closed early. We were at least able to finish out the school year. It's our comparison from year to year. Again, we have a lot of work to do regarding ADA. We have a pretty good plan in place to improve that, and I look forward to the challenge with that. And it's just another reflection of a week by week. So this is, these are, so I'm going to go over this. This is raw data. In other words, the, some of... In other words, the, some of the students after the snapshot, they're here, they're just, this is a raw data file, so this is very preliminary in terms of what it looks. Now, as a district, we have chosen domain two, which is growth. Domain one is really about whether you were successful on the test or not, whether you went beyond the Meets and Masters. So, again, this is basically, this is very raw data. We don't think it's going to change that much, but I'd like to, so the only comparison for the letter grade, the last comparison we have was 2018, 2019. Of course, there wasn't one in 2020, so this is what we're faced with now. So, on the bright side here, we're looking at being an A-rated district, and you can see the column, it says D2A letter rating. So, you can see where our campuses, most of our, all of our elementary schools will be A-rated campuses. There, we have one A campus, Mary Hoag Middle School will be an A, and then we'll have our CTE, Early College, will be an A as well. So, but again, if you look at it from the 2018, 2019 letter grade, we had some significant improvement regarding our growth. We really honed in on growth. That was the focus for this year, but again, these are prelim, these are very preliminary scores, but I just wanted to share this with you so that you can kind of see where we're at academically. You know, again, academically, Westlaco ISD has always performed well, and we have, we have a lot of, we have, the commitment of the teachers and staff at Westlaco ISD is enormous. I remember at the conference last week, one of the comments that a presenter said, it says that commitment begins when the fun stops. And I, so here we have, I don't know, I think it's always been fun, but maybe for the teachers, it hasn't been fun, but you can certainly see their clear commitment. So, again, I want to say congratulations to all of our principals, our teachers, our staff, students, parents, that made Westlaco ISD an A-rated campus, A-rated district. So, if you're out there, principals and teachers, congratulations, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Coronel. Item nine, consent agenda. We'll have the trustees look through the items, and then we'll see if you're going to pull Okay? Ms. Anieto?
None.
Ms. Saita?
Yes, I'd like to pull out letter O, number one, Consultants for Special Education Services.
O one? José Vino? Dr. Rodriguez?
I have none.
And Ms. Los Santos?
Item P.
Item which one?
P.
P?
P is in Paul.
P is in Paul. Okay, with the exception of item O one and P, do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Saita. Let's take it to a vote, signify your approval, but say not going to call your name. Ms. Anieto?
Aye.
Ms. Saita?
Aye.
José Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Ms. Los Santos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now, to item O one, Ms. Saita.
Yes, sir. I pulled this item out. This has kind of been on my radar ever since last year with, when the audit came up, with consultants and special education services, especially occupational therapy services. And the reason why is because I've talked to certain people who are involved with consultants, and I know that the consultants that we have right now, you know, they're local, that's fine, that's great. I know that other districts, of what I've heard, are getting rid of consultant services and are doing an in-house occupational therapist instead. Do we have any information on what is more price, not price, but what works better for districts? Is it consulting services, or is it having an in-house therapist? Have we looked into that?
So, I can answer, I can answer this one very well. So, a lot of times, what happens is that your numbers fluctuate, and so let's say, for example, we bring in an OT for $80,000, and their caseload is 65 kids. So, and we're going to keep that employee for those 85 kids, and then, for some reason, either the kids age out, they no longer need the service, there's no longer, so now the caseload drops to 55, it drops to 45. We're still paying $80,000 plus fringes, right? So, the, when you contract, when you contract a company, you're focused just on the therapy. There's no benefits, there's no, you're not paying any of the fringes that we have, and we are providing for the service, or we're paying for just the service.
Do we have a number of how many kids and caseloads we have in our district?
I, is Mr. Neil Garza on here?
Good evening. It's approximately 370.
370. And we have, right now, in-house?
We have a registered occupational therapist, and we have a certified occupational therapist assistant.
Okay. And have those numbers throughout the years fluctuated from 370, or do you kind of see the same numbers year to year? What have you seen?
It went down just a little bit, not a significant amount, but a little bit this year.
Okay, so you would expect for some of those kids to be graduating from the program or, you know, finishing? Are we seeing that with the consultants when the consultants are helping them, or are we still keeping them in the program?
It depends with our people. Our people handle the evaluation of the students and the consultants this year. It was a bit of a different role because for the first time this year, we had a registered occupational therapist, and they took care of the evaluations, and the consultants is, Dr. Coronel touched on, did provide the therapy.
And now that you mentioned evaluations, Mr. Garza, how has that worked with the consultants? Are they doing evaluations? Because I remember the audit that we had, you know, some evaluations were missed, logs were missing, or we were paying out POs, we were paying out consultants with no POs. There was just red flags there, you know? Are we collecting, are the consultants completing the paperwork to collect from SHARs? Are we having a hard time as compared to our in-house?
I mean, from time to time, there's times that I need to follow up with them, but basically, when we follow up with them, things get done.
So, you have to follow up and say, give me paperwork?
At times, they're competent professionals, they do a good job for us.
So, what do you think benefits the district more? Somebody that we have here at Westlaco that works just with us, or consultants?
I think it just depends what lens you're going to look at it from. If you're looking at it in terms of cost effectiveness, it's pretty clear, it's more cost effective to go the route of the consultants. If you look at it, what might be preferential, perhaps having the in-house, but you really got to weigh both of them. Dr. Coronel brought up a good point about, should there be dramatic shifts in terms of numbers when you have employees? Well, the employee is still an employee, Dr. Coronel, correct?
And would those employees be able to take care of the caseload without consultants? We're not going to have an employee taking care of five kids?
Yeah, not with the numbers we have and the registered, the occupational therapist assistant and the registered occupational therapist, we couldn't handle the load with just those two.
I'd like to add, too, that there are many, this is a hot commodity person. They don't want to tie themselves to a district. They don't, they don't want to work for just one district. They want to be able to control their hours. Their focus is the child or the person receiving the treatment, you know, not all the other things that an employee has to be part of. So, you know, I think to offset, I do support Mr. Garza's position on, do we need, if we can do our own evaluations and then contract the service itself, then I totally support that, and I think that was the reason why we did this.
Okay. I'm just, because I've heard many different viewpoints, and one of the viewpoints from the actual people who work for us say, it would be better to just have our own in-house and not consult, and there's, do we know other districts that are doing that?
It's really, and I'll provide, it seems like, I was going to say I'm repeating myself from a year ago, because, yeah, and I think the comment I kept referring is it's a mixed bag, so a year later, I'll say the same thing, it's a mixed bag. You do have some districts that take care of it completely in-house, you have some districts take care of it completely on a contracted basis, and then you have some that sort of split it up the way we do.
Okay. I'm just not sure.
I normally compare to Harlingen, because having the opportunity to work over there, we use consultants over there.
So, we're doing a mix of both. We have in-house and then we're outsourcing some of it.
That's correct, and in terms of what you'll find out there, that's what districts are doing as well, whether it be, you might find some that handle it completely 100% in-house, some of them 50/50, some of them completely contracted.
Does SHARs, are we, are we collecting what we need from SHARs? This is a big issue also.
Yeah, it's certainly a big issue. It can't be the sole issue because from one year to the next, the rules may change with SHARs, and they actually did change this year, and it's more limiting in terms of what people are able to bill for, even the credentials that are needed to be billed for, and so although that's important, I don't think that can be the sole determinant of the decision that we make.
Oh, no.
Because from one day to the next, who knows?
Yeah, but we're talking about millions of dollars for special ed.
Potentially, potentially, correct. And so, I certainly don't minimize that, but it's something, we're required to provide these services regardless, and so one never knows from one year to the next what we're going to face with respect to cutbacks. And again, with respect to paperwork, I checked with our SHARs clerk, and she said, yes, the people have submitted, they're up to date, because we have, you don't necessarily need to do it the week of, the day of, the month of. We've got up until the summer, and she said, we're up to date. So, all I can go by is what I was told before I came to the meeting.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm hearing correctly, that we prefer consulting instead of in-house.
Well, I would, I'd like to add to that, though, ma'am, is that right now, this is the best option for us, rather than hiring an employee. I don't know that, right now, the number one concern that we have right now is providing the service. That's what we need to be able to do right now, is provide the service. Even if we wanted to hire an employee of, as an OT, we'd have to post, we'd have to do a lot of things between now and getting somebody on board, rather than just hiring a consultant, because especially if we have a student with, I don't know how many students we have, with have ESY, so we just, there's a myriad of things, and right now, this is about providing the service to the child.
And they're getting them with the consultants, they're showing up, they're doing their work.
That's correct.
Okay.
How many therapists would we need for the numbers that we have?
We've got two on board full-time. If we wanted to fully staff and ensure that the service was provided, we need two more.
And SHARs does not cover them, of course, right? They're what we would pay them. It's not covered by SHARs.
We get reimbursement, but the amount that you get, it certainly adds up, but the biggest moneymaker for the SHARs is the personal care services, and that's provided by our teachers and our assistants, and even that's limited in terms of the definition, and so the scope of what we're able to bill for with that is certainly, for personal care services, has been more limiting, or been limited, rather. And with respect to occupational therapy, I'm not saying we don't get reimbursed, I'm not saying it doesn't add up, but it certainly doesn't add up to, you don't get reimbursed the total amount for the session. It's a percentage.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garza.
No, thank you, thank you.
I want to go ahead, Mr. Garza, I want to go ahead and follow up with a question on this.
Sure.
And Dr. Coronado, I guess, you know, I'm listening to the hesitation here on Dr., or on Ms. Saita. Are we doing something to counter or to eliminate or bring down some of those red flags that we did have from the audit? Are we doing something in place now to limit, to make sure that we are, who's verifying and checking to make sure that the hours logged in are correct or as?
And I don't mean to interrupt, but I do want to be clear, there wasn't a red flag with respect to, are the services actually being provided? I think what you guys may be referring to is the fact that perhaps, and we weren't the only entity within the district with, there were, perhaps there weren't purchase orders in place. I think if you look at the audit, it was very clear also, there was no, the conclusion they reached is there was no intent to circumvent the purchasing system or laws. It was pointed out here, it wasn't something that was required, and it wasn't necessarily anything that was the fault of occupational therapists, it was just with respect to the costs or perhaps sometimes the building, and Andres certainly recognizes what the issues are far better than I in terms of why you don't end up with a purchase order. It's not that somebody is, how should you say, intending to say, you know what, forget this, I'm just not going to come up with a purchase order. They come up with something, and then there's reasons why you can't use it, right, Andres? It wasn't a case of somebody just flouting the system and saying, no, I don't want to do this. I mean, there was reasons for it. But I don't think the report indicated that it was a case where services weren't being verified, it was a case where perhaps we were getting billed and not providing, I mean, providing payment when services weren't being provided. I just want to be perfectly clear about that.
I'm sorry, we do have appendices where we do have, we do have logs that were missing that were, that were being billed, that there were no logs.
Got it.
In the appendices. So, there were.
Got it.
Yeah. That's why I'm so adamant about this, because in the appendices that we got, they were there.
Yeah, and I can tell you, we took that information, and we've, our secretary sits down and she verifies, we've had our staff at the school have to sign for it. And so, what every invoice that's turned in is a case where you've got to look at what was, did somebody sign for it? They picked up the kid from somewhere, did the adult where the kid was, the classroom the kid was at, did they, did they sign for it? And that's the case.
Are they getting seen at home also, the kids?
That was more the case the previous year. If we've got kids in homebound services, then that would have to be the case as well.
Okay.
So, is, may I ask, is the concern the service or the billing?
The concern is, we're being billed for services that weren't being done.
Okay.
That's my concern.
Yes.
Because of appendices that I had in the audit.
Got it.
That we had bills, but there were no logs or services being done, yet we were being billed and we were paying for them.
Yeah, I can assure you, I saw the bill, I saw the logs this, before we made this recommendation.
Well, yeah, hopefully, it's gotten fixed, as Mr. Trevino was saying. Have we fixed it? Hopefully we have.
And that's why I asked the question, what's the, is the concern the actual service or is it the billing of the service?
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
The service wasn't being done, but it was being billed.
Yeah, and we acted accordingly. We put in processes where, you know what, there's got to be a teacher's signature in there. They're picking up the kids from somewhere.
Okay. That's why I just feel more comfortable with having somebody in-house that is going to be here with us, and we can be checking, and a consultant, it just, I don't, I didn't like what I saw on that audit from that, and that's why I bring this up.
Got it. And my apologies, when you get to be my age, you don't remember everything.
No, it's okay. So, yeah, that's why I brought this up, and a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trevino, any additional questions?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Los Santos?
Okay, item P.
Item P.
Yes, item P.
Yes, item P deals with surplus property. I just saw on here, a quick question. Twelve pallets of library books. I was just curious as to the condition of the books. And I know sometimes there's programs out there, either local or within the state, that, that provides these to, you know, homes that need books, to kids that are in the community, or even kids, even students that attend the school districts. So I was just wondering, what is the condition of the twelve pallets of books? And, and what is the, I guess, what is going to be the final end or outcome for those?
So my understanding is that the books that, that we have are either excess or outdated, or no longer under adoption. Is that pretty much correct?
The library books?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, but they're not actual library books, like novels, things like that, nothing of that nature? That's why I was just asking, because I know some districts, they donate those to local organizations, and sometimes they give those out to kids.
I don't see Mrs. Calviere here, but they're, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
The books are out of circulation. They are library books. They're in decent shape. And whatever direction the board wants to take, we can certainly do that. We can donate them. We can hold back, whatever you all like to do.
I know I've seen some programs where districts, they distribute them out to students that, or parents that are interested in the picking. Because we're trying to promote literacy and learning, but sometimes we have homes out there in our community that are economically disadvantaged, and a $5, $10 book goes, you know, even whether it's at HEB, Walmart, etc., sometimes it's not attainable. And there's, sometimes there's a lot of students that never actually even go into a Barnes and Nobles unless it's a school trip. So I was just curious, I saw twelve pallets, and I thought, are they in good condition? And then maybe we can put those in the hands of our, of our, of our kids.
They're in decent condition.
And, and we can, we can find a home for those books, sir. The agenda item really just allows us permission, or you grant us permission, so that we can go ahead and dispose accordingly.
Okay.
So, but we can take care of that.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you for the information.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve items O, one and P?
Some of them, yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval. Say you're not going to call your name, or no, if you don't approve. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Are we approving both O and P?
The other, the ones that were pulled, yes.
Okay, because I do not want to vote on, oh, I abstain on O.
Abstain on O?
And vote yes for P.
Yes for P, okay. Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. We now go to item 10, discussion items. A, interim financial report for the nine months ended May 31, 2022. Dr. Coronel?
Sir, these are just our, our reports that you have. Should be our, the budget items for the month. To let you know where we're at, and what we've spent on the budget so far to date. Give you a moment to look at those. No, no significant highlights of that. Other than nearly seventy, seventy percent of our budget spent.
And question, does this budget year go to the end of July?
And June 30th, sir.
June 30th?
June 30th.
Okay.
So we, we have about eight more days, and we're counting.
Okay. That's right, June 30th.
And again, I just want to highlight so far to date, our, if you look at our estimated fund balance, just over 62 million. Again, putting the district in a really good shape.
Any discussion on?
No, sir.
No.
No.
Okay. We now move to item B. Acknowledgement of the Yodalko County Tax Office Collection Report for May 2022, Current Taxes and Delinquent Taxes. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, we have not received the updated delinquent tax report for May. Oh, is it? Okay, we got it yesterday, I'm sorry. So there it is on the screen. There we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have any, any questions on?
No, sir.
Yeah, questions in it there? Anyone, Eddie?
No, sir.
Okay. Dr. Coronel? Andres? Thank you for the info.
Okay.
And that takes us to item 11, discussing impossible action items.
Here we go.
A, discussing impossible action for the board to consider student dress code flexibility with school uniforms for students in elementary and middle school. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, we, we, this topic came up at, and so we wanted to look at the dress code regarding uniforms. Now, understanding that the uniform, just because you have a uniform or don't have a uniform, as a, by policy in our student code of conduct, we still have a dress code. So, but the, but the specific item was regarding uniforms, on whether or not we should, as a district, move away from the uniform policy. Right now, our middle schools and elementary schools have, wear uniforms. And so we did a survey that we received 26 or 2,700 comments, or 2,700 responses, and over 1,200, nearly 1,300 comments. Some were good comments, some were pretty, pretty colorful responses as well. Needless to say, it was, there was an overwhelming response that, that we should not do away with uniforms. However, with a caveat, we, we, we ask if it was jeans were, be acceptable. So, so we still want to, my, my recommendation here for this particular item is to, to maintain the consistency that we've had with our current uniform policy. However, add jeans as the choice of pants and not just khakis. So that's, that's my recommendation.
So the jeans would be available Monday through Friday?
Yes.
Correct?
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Is there any discussion? Now, especially middle school, are they going to have designated colors for certain grade levels? Or, I know you mentioned it there in the survey.
Yes. I, so I think eighth grade is blue, seventh grade is maroon, and green is sixth grade.
How about elementary?
All colors.
Okay.
Green, maroon, navy blue for secondary.
I know that we had brought up how we, the principals in schools use fun, jean days or, you know, for fundraising, and it might create, maybe we could, I was talking to Dr. Coronado, maybe think, do something like hat day or something different. I don't know. Start thinking outside of the box. What else can we do to create those funds, those fundraisers, other than jeans, if we're going to be allowed to wear jeans? I know Ms. Cavassos is here, and her daughter's the one that talked about it a couple of months ago, saying, I want, you know, it feels more comfortable. So hopefully jeans will help out a little, a little bit more, if you were able to wear that with a polo, meet in the middle somewhere. But for the principals who are fundraising, you know, just maybe think of, it can be incorporated to the dress code, you know, if we can wear hats on some day, or I don't know.
Sometimes you can, you can have a, a day where it's your, your dress of choice. Not uniform, not, that could be one of the days.
Free dress.
That you could do the scholarship funding. So.
I mean, I want to also say thank you for surveying, putting the survey out there for the, for the parents, because, you know, regardless of how many people, you know, took the time to get onto the link and respond, it's important that we get their feedback, because this really falls back on their pockets and their situations. And also, I, I am, I am fond of, of dress codes, especially in elementary, and I'll explain why. Because kids already go to school facing a lot of challenges, especially with bullying and, and things of that nature. And eliminating the brand of shoes, or the clothing, or, or that, those situations where they're economically disadvantaged, and they don't have, some parents don't have the money to buy three weeks' worth of wardrobe so that they can sweat shed and swap out. And so eliminating that, so that they're focused more on academics, and rather than being bullied over the brand of clothes that they're wearing at the time, I think is productive. So the kids focus on what matters, which is education. And then they'll still have an opportunity, when they get to high school, to express themselves, you know, in their, in their clothing, in their hairstyles and whatnot. But, so that's just my, my two cents. And so I'm really glad that the survey results came in the way that they did.
And thank you to Sarah Cavassos's daughter that brought it up to our attention several months ago. It's, we're going forward.
Oh, yes.
Kids get to wear jeans now because you talked.
Right.
So thank you for speaking up. You're very brave.
Okay, so. Any further discussion? So are we going to approve the item as worded, or are we going to add?
As recommended, yes.
As recommended, okay. So we will vote on the consideration of dress code flexibility with the school uniforms for students in elementary and middle schools. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, by saying, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B, discussing a possible action for the board to consider approval of proposed change to board policy DEC local compensation and benefits, leaves and absences. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, member of the board, members of the board, this takes away the $40 and the $20 fee for substitutes, that if they took a, a personal day, that they would have to pay the $40. So this just basically says, take your day.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos and a second by Costa Vino?
No.
Any discussion?
No.
None?
No, no.
Let's take it to a vote then. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, discussing a possible action for the board to consider approval of a resolution regarding the adoption of a sex education curriculum for Westaco ISD 6th and 12th grade students. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, this, this resolution allows you to delegate to the Shack to hold two public meetings, to determine the, the sex education curriculum for the school year of, for 2022, 23.
So move to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Mr. Los Santos for the approval of a resolution regarding the adoption of a sex education curriculum for Westaco ISD 6th and 12th grade students. Any discussion? Okay, take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, discussing a possible action for the board to consider approval of a board resolution and an interlocal agreement to join the Education Service Center, Region 10, to provide an internal revenue code, section 457B Retirement Savings Plan to District, through the ESC Region 10, 457 Cooperative and Master Plan. Dr. Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, this is, offers, we only offer a 403B plan for our employees. This just offers another plan, a 457, because you can actually donate to both. So that's what this plan is for. This just offers another plan, other than the 403B.
Motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Los Santos for approval of the proposal, no, the resolution for the interlocal agreement for the 457 Retirement Savings Plan. Any discussion? Take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, discussing a possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for student athletic and accident insurance, athletic, catastrophic, and voluntary. RFP number 22-06-20. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, this, the recommendation is to renew our current student athletic and, and athletic and accident insurance. This has been vetted through our A D and our coaches, so we recommend renewal of our current insurance.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos?
Second.
And a second by Dr. Rodriguez to consider the approval of the proposal award for student athletic and accident insurance. Do we have any discussion?
No.
Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, discussing a possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for workers' compensation, third-party administrative services, and excess reinsurance. RFP number 22-06-21. Dr. Coronel?
Board President, members of the board, we received one proposal. I recommend approval for TriStar, to approve TriStar for our workman's compensation.
Move to approve?
Okay, we have Mr. Nieto?
Yes.
Making a motion and a second by Dr. Rodriguez for the approval of a proposal award for the workers' compensation, third-party administrative services. Do we have any discussion? Okay, take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G.
Excuse me, Dr. Coronel, there was two items for this. There was TriStar and the excess carrier as well. Sorry. It was TriStar Risk Management, which you approved, and U.S. Specialty Insurance for the excess reinsurance.
It's the, it's the, we're going with, we're renewing it, though.
It, it's a new proposal. But, uh, current, yeah, this is the current carrier.
Okay. So we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item Gina, discussion of possible action for the board to consider approval of proposal award for fleet auto liability and physical damage, general liability, crime and law enforcement insurance, RFP number 22-06-22. Dr. Coronel?
So I just want to make sure that we received one proposal for this as well, through Hub International. Is that correct, Mr. Del Rosca?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Because this is a big umbrella, right, that covers, let's see, law enforcement, fleet, crime, and general liability, correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. My recommendation is to approve.
Motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Los Santos?
Second.
And a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve of the proposal award for the fleet auto liability, physical damage, general liability, crime and law enforcement insurance, RFP number 22-06-22. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H, discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of specific and aggregate stop-loss insurance for the district's self-funded employee benefit program, or authorize administration to solicit proposals for the same, RFP number 21-07-37. Dr. Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend that we authorize the administration to solicit proposals and issue an RFP for this, for this item.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Los Santos?
Second.
And a second by Dr. Rodriguez for authorizing administration to solicit proposals for the same, RFP number 21-07-37. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval, say an aye, when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Costa Vino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item A, discussion of possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's employer paid term life, A, D, and D insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, through the interlocal participation agreement with the with the Texas Education Educational Employers Benefit Cooperative, T E E B C, or authorize administration to solicit proposals for same. Dr. Coronel?
Uh, I recommend renewal, um, of our current, uh, this, uh, this life insurance is what we, uh, proposed on the compensation plan as well. This is the dollar twenty per employee per month. So I recommend approval.
So move to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Nieto?
Right.
And a second by Mr. Lo Santos. To renew the district's employer-paid term life A D and D insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas through the inter-local participation agreement with the Texas Education Employers Benefit Cooperative, T E E B C. Any discussion? Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye by calling your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item J, discussion and possible action for the board to rescind the action taken during the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting, renewing Aria's offer to provide pharmacy benefit management, P B M, services for the district's self-funded medical benefit program, plan year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize administration to request proposals for same. R F P number twenty-one dash zero seven dash thirty-seven. Dr. Coronel?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, based on new information after the board meeting, um, that we received, um, I, I, I'm recommending that we rescind the P B M that we renewed for Aria and go out for an R F P.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Lo Santos?
Second.
Second by Coach Trevino. To rescind the action taken during the May seventeen, twenty-twenty-two regular board meeting, renewing Aria's offer to provide pharmacy benefit management, P B M, services for the district's self-funded medical benefit program, plan year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, and authorize administration to request proposals for the same. R F P number twenty-one dash zero seven dash twenty-three. Any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Authorize your approval by saying aye by calling your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item, okay, discussion and possible action for the board to approve the renewal purchase of cyber liability insurance from Houston Casualty through Brackenridge Insuring Services, Montado Insurance. Dr. Coronel?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, this is for our cyberware that we have for our network. Uh, we did receive one bid, um, and so I recommend approval.
So move to approve?
We have approval by, uh, Mr. Nieto and a second by Mr. Lo Santos. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item L, discussion and possible action to enter into an inter-local participation agreement with the political subdivision Alliance of Texas for Provision of Certain Insurance Coverages and Reinsurance of Such Coverages. Dr. Coronel?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, this allows us to join the co-op so that basically it allows us to insurance shop for, on that co-op.
Move to approve?
Okay, motion by, um, Dr. Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lo Santos. To, uh, enter in, into an inter-local participation agreement with the political subdivision Alliance of Texas for Provision of Certain Insurance Coverages and Reinsurance of Such Coverages. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye by calling your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item M, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the annual review of the district's investment policy. Dr. Coronel?
Board President and members of the board, this is an annual review of our, uh, uh, investment policy. I would like to add that I recommend to keep this the same, um, based on, uh, I, I guess, also what you're going to do in item O. So at this point, I'd like to, to recommend that you approve or no change to our current policy.
Motion to approve?
Can we approve of Mr. Lo Santos?
Second.
And a second by Dr. Rodriguez. For the, uh, consideration of approval of the annual review of the district's investment policy. Do we have any discussion? Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye by calling your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mr. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item N, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to renew an agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Westaco Incorporated for the school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Dr. Coronel?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, we have a pretty positive relationship with the Boys and Girls Club here in, in Westaco. Um, we have four campuses that are active participants and, and this allows us, um, to continue our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of, of Westaco. It, uh, the, the cost is about forty-seven dollars per student.
So move to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Nieto?
Second.
Second by Dr. Rodriguez. To, uh, consider approval of the renewal with, uh, agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Westaco Incorporated for the school year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I have brought this up before. Um, I know that we said that we have a T class or some kind of grant, right?
T class.
T class. It's going to help with funds after school. But I, I'm seeing here, um, there's four schools only with Boys and Girls Club, which is great. Memorial, Silva, Mario, Ibarra, and Anthony Rico. But are we, why, uh, why are we not giving the opportunity to other schools?
I, I think it was a funding issue. I mean, we can have more schools ba- based on funding.
Can we work out a deal with Boys and Girls Club and say, hey, add more schools or? I don't know, I, I know that the T class grant will help, but I think, you know, we're, we're paying that, that's quite a bit. I think for me, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for after-school Boys and Girls Club. And I don't know how many kids are involved and, and, and it's a great benefit for the district, great benefit. But if it could be given to other schools too, not just, cause how long have they, have they been at those same schools?
There are nearly, there's twenty-seven hundred students involved.
Twenty-seven, okay, that's, that's good. But only though, at those four schools or how, do they move around or how does it work?
At those four schools.
At those four schools. How many, we don't know how many years they've been there?
Um, I can't answer that question.
We have a couple of principals here that you can ask.
Maybe Ms., uh.
Uh, Carlos, I don't know if you can.
Uh, they've been at Memorial for about fifteen years, I believe.
Fifteen years, wow.
And, um, we were, uh, did help them for a couple of years, but they do help us throughout the day because they're part of the rotation. So it helps us with the children, the, the, and Boys and Girls Clubs.
Oh, wow, well, that's great. Memorial has it, but I'm sure a lot of other schools would also, uh, want to take part in that. Yeah.
I think when it was, uh, go ahead, Linda.
Uh, we have them also during the day and it is part of our elective rotation.
Oh, okay.
And they do a good job. We have their own curriculum and they teach to the kids and they allow kids, like every elective, that is part of our rotation.
That's awesome.
And I think at one time they asked the principals who wanted to host it at their campus a few years ago.
It's an opt-in program, I think.
Right?
They did offer that as well, but then the choice was given to the principals, um, at the time. I know it's also due to staffing on Boys and Girls Clubs, yeah. You know, so they also have to commit to that staffing as well.
Correct. Is that, um, do we provide bus transportation or is that pickup only, those Boys and Girls Clubs? Pickup only?
It's pickup.
Oh, pickup, right.
I, I know physical education, the P E is a big deal, right? They should be getting it every day at, at, at school and, and I know I was a teacher, like there's a, you know, it's, it's tough. And I don't know how many schools do or don't have P E every day. Um, but Boys and Girls Club would be a great benefit to those schools who are struggling with the, the physical education, uh, classes. So I don't know if we can work out a deal or, I don't, just look into this because.
We, we can work to either expand or find an alternative.
Yeah, for, I, and that's, that's great for schools, but if we can add more, that would be great.
Well, last year when we looked at this, we approved it, but I thought it was going to be on a rotation basis. I know you weren't here, doctor, but I thought it was going to be on, on a rotation basis where we offered it to another four schools this, this year. Instead of the same schools and sa- and having it go to the same schools. I, I, why is that not an option? And I would just like more information. I, I, on this, on this Boys and Girls Club. I felt last year it was just thrown at us at the, the last minute. Uh, I know this year we, we have it here or we've had this packet here for a few days. But, uh, to me it was, why is it just the same four schools? I, I understand if we can't expand it to everybody else, but why can't we rotate it? Why isn't it, why hasn't it been discussed or on a rotation basis to another four schools?
I, I, I can't answer that question. I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
But, uh, I, I know that the four schools that have it enjoy it and if we can expand it. Um, I don't know if it's a limited capacity at the Boys and Girls Club, um, that they have limitations as well. And maybe they can't offer it to, to the remaining six schools because of, of staffing and so forth. Um, or if we choose to pay for it. So I think, um, you know, we, we, this, this is an after-school program or during-the-stay program. Uh, like any other program that's external, we're, we're going to have to pay for it. So we're, we're paying for this and if we don't pay for this, we're going to have to pay for something else.
Uh, uh, every week that I open up a newspaper, you know, Sundays or whatever, there's always marketing from other districts, after-school programs. And now we're doing this and this program. And it just makes me think as a parent, wow, I want my kids to go there. I want them to do stuff after school because I'm working till five, five-thirty. And if they can stay after school and do something great, it's a great marketing tool that they're using for these after-school programs. And you're right, we're putting money into this in hopes that we can get more kids into our district because it is a great marketing tool to have those after-school programs. So if we can even market things like this, you know, Westaco, because we're doing a great job marketing everywhere. I'm driving around, I see the signs everywhere, I say, yeah, Westaco, I see the right choice, they're all, they're all over the place. So this is another great, uh, benefit and asset to the district that we should, you know, really let people know because we just assume, oh, people know that there are after-school programs, but really a lot of people don't know that. They, they don't know that we offer all these extra benefits at Westaco ISD. So if we can also put that out there, that would be great.
Well, and, and this is not just after school. This is also during, during the day.
I didn't even know that, that's awesome.
And the, the, the other thing I would add is that at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's, that's the cost of two teachers. But, I, I mean, so if, so really for a hundred and twenty-five thousand and we're having an impact on four campuses, I think it's a pretty good deal. Because otherwise, we're just going to get two teachers that we're going to park somewhere, um, and we're not going to have the same impact on twenty-seven hundred kids with two teachers.
Yeah, or we can add, hey, ten thousand dollars more, but you're expanded to more schools or something, you know, let's work out something where we can.
Well.
Sorry, should we mention T class? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
T class, how many campuses does that impact, the T class grant? And it's, it's, it really kicks off next year, all the way to twenty-three, twenty-four?
It's.
Middle schools? Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, middle schools.
Um, Dr. Coronel, you can follow up with the other principals that don't have it to see if they would like to have it. Because like I said before, uh, a few years ago when we voted on that, those principals decided to have it. Some didn't want to have it, you know, for whatever reason.
That was the understanding we had, Mr. Rodriguez. Do you remember that discussion when we, we brought that up? Cause we, we asked the same question about the availability for, for other campuses and.
Correct.
And what we were told is that, uh, eh, the offer was there, but, uh, they chose not to, uh, accept the, the opportunity. So the campuses that have been having the opportunity, uh, have continued to because nobody has asked the questions. But, um, but, uh, I mean, that was then, this is now, so.
Well, I also think that a lot of our campuses are doing something. They're not just, just because they don't have the Boys and Girls Club, they're doing something else. So, so I, I wouldn't discount that, you know, we're talking about expanding it, but i- if we expand it to another campus, well, then that means we're going to take away from what they're doing already. Um, and we don't want to do that either. Um, you know, I've never believed in forcing a program top-down. I, I, I think if, if we make it available to them and they want it, I, I think we, we allow it to grow. And right now, if, if my understanding of this is that these are the four campuses that want it. Um, the cost was, as far as I'm concerned, is reasonable. I mean, again, you, you know, we, we have an impact on twenty-seven hundred students. I mean, even, even at the salary of two teachers, we're not going to, now you're looking at fifty kids versus twenty-seven hundred. So, so I, I think it's, I think it's a good deal. And, and again, my, my recommendation is to, to approve.
And we definitely, yeah, it was definitely a good deal. I'm thinking about it though, if I was a principal, that, you know, we're talking about school-based budgets and you want kids attracted to your school and you want to be a magnet to those schools. Well, I'm going to have a better, I'm going to have more of an advantage in my school having Boys and Girls Club than another school whom I not. I'm just thinking, I want to have an even, I don't even know if kids would want to have, go to Boys and Girls Club in other schools. You know, it's just something to research and, and talk about. Would this benefit your school or would some program similar like this benefit your school? And maybe draw more kids in, because that's the goal that we want, is draw your kids into your school. That's what we want. So just research and find out.
Okay.
What each school wants to do.
I'd like to also see how many other districts are doing something like this, doctor. I, I mean, I've worked at five or six districts and I never heard anything other until I got here to West, until I got on the board. Cause even when I was here for seven years.
I, I know there's quite a few districts that have a partnership with their Boys and Girls Club. Then this is, now remember, Boys and, this is local. So this is Boys and Girls Club of Westaco. So, so they're only going to service Westaco. They're not going to, they're, they're not servicing other, partnering with other school districts outside of Westaco.
No, no, but that, like San Mito, I know they have their Boys and Girls Club. Harlingen has their Boys and Girls Club. San Felipe del Rio has their Boys and Girls Club. I've just never saw them partner up like this or charge a, a fee like this. So I, I mean, those are just some of my questions that I have on this.
I mean, yes, I, I know what you're saying, uh, the trustee Trevino, because some, some schools, what they do is they'll bus them to the, an actual Boys and Girls Club site. Like McAllen, Mercedes, et cetera, all those, so they don't have it in, in the campus in-house. I don't even, do we even have a facility here in Westaco anymore or no? We do?
They just, they just received a one-point-seven million dollar grant to build, to build a new one. So they, so they're, I, I mean, uh, they're doing a lot, they do a lot for kids.
Dr. Coronel?
And we do bus our kids there? They have the, that's built into the routes or no? Cause I know some school districts built that into the routes as one of the, the drop-offs that they do. They do have that here?
I, I don't know.
I don't know if they, because we do it, because we do it in-house.
Right, okay.
Now, Dr. Coronado, these four schools, this program is during the day, correct? Not an after-school program?
That's, that's correct.
After-school and during the day, I think. Some of the principals said they have different programs.
During the day, it serves the entire population, which is a fun innovation. After-school, this year, we hopefully have that third, but it's falling out. The Boys and Girls Club office, they definitely will be willing to accommodate more than the other issues.
Okay.
There's also, these are associated after-school registration.
Month, I think, right?
Yeah, the parents pay a few.
Because the majority of the program works during the day.
Right.
Smart, smart with the curriculum, and they have one minute for me.
Okay.
So a lot of that relies on staff, because they have to secure staff, that they're, we're gonna make that commitment, and of course, if the decision is to uphold it.
So during, so during the day, it's like an elective, or?
They have their rotation, so I can give you an example, from Memorial Elementary, they have 907,2 students, rotation, 500 at Ceballos, or 94 at Nevada, at 680 at Rico, that rotate during the day.
And once again, are all the schools getting the PE every day plus another elective, or is it not working like that still? Are they getting physical education every day?
That is correct. It was a PE, because they have their requirement that they have to fulfill.
What is the Boys and Girls, I mean, what does this actually offer? I mean, what do they actually offer, other than providing assistance during rotation? I mean, what do we mean by that? Do they service a 20 kids a day, or 20 day, 20 kids during each period or something?
I can give you a little breakdown, especially for that. I mean, do they have character and leadership development, focus on education and career development, health and life skills, arts and crafts, sports and fitness? Those are, you know, some of the, some of what they offer, as well as what they supplement from the campus during the day, as far as instruction.
As far as a list of programs after school that the parents can, or kids, is that out there somewhere? Like, these are the programs, a list of programs that you can do after school? Do we have anything like that?
When we talk about the Boys and Girls Club?
Through, just any kinds of, do Boys and Girls Club through UIL, through whatever it is, in elementaries, and I know middle schools, you know, sports, but more like the elementaries? Is there a list of programs that we can look at?
We have clubs that we have during the year. A lot of that right now is, we offer through UIL, different clubs that we have that we offer, that we have sponsors within our school district. But as far as that, those partnerships out there, no, not in elementary.
No. Okay. Because like I said, I look at the newspaper, you know, you look at Harlingen, or you look at a McAllen, and, oh, all these programs are being offered, and it's put out there, and you're reading it, and you're saying, wow, I want my kids to be part of that. So a list of programs, what we can, what we offer to be put out there, I think would be a great asset.
You know, we do leave a lot to the principal to market their campuses as well. And so they have a pretty unique, you know, school community. All of our schools have a unique school community. And so what we don't, we support, or I support the principals, you know, and I think from, to provide what they need to market their campuses. But each, each community is very unique. So what works for one campus may not work for another. So we have to allow them to kind of grow, rather than have it top-down. I just, I'm, I'm very into letting principals run their own campus, market their own campus, you know, pay for their own campus, and, you know, I mean, it just, it, it, talk about extreme ownership, and they're gonna have to own that. And I think that's, that's a paradigm shift that we're going through as a district. And right now, for this particular item, right now, this item works for these campuses. And at the cost that, at its current cost, as it's presented, there's value. And so to, but I understand what you're saying, in terms of trying to expand and list, and maybe we can do a better job marketing our elementary schools, and provide those lists, and provide those activities. And I think those are great ideas. I just think for this particular item, we have four schools that like the program, you know, that's 25% of our district campuses are recommending that, they want this program, they enjoy this program, and so I think to, I think to not approve it, it's taken away from, from their programming as it stands right now.
I don't, I don't know that we're gonna not approve it, but what Monsieur Saita and Coach Trevino are addressing was the key element that we talked about earlier in the year, about bringing equity for all our students, and that's all that's amount, really. So the option to, to grow into it, obviously, are gonna be something to look for, so.
Yeah, it's about growing it, because it's a great program. I wouldn't not, I wouldn't not approve it. It's, it's, how can we make it expand for more?
And we can look at what other, what our elementary schools are actually doing for activities, and then, and then, I know the reason for the pictures today was because we're really trying to expand our website. And so each campus will have their list of activities, and now we can still, because we know that's, when people apply for a job in Westlaco ISD, the, when they see a vacancy, the first place they go to is the website. So we want to make sure that all those activities are listed, and they want to see happy faces, and uniformed, and, you know, they want to see diversity. So we want to showcase those things, and so I think it is important, and that's part of the things that we've been working on in moving forward.
Do elementary schools still have extended day and Saturday school, and accelerated learning?
Yes.
Yes, they do. So those are some of the activities that they have. Okay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Let's take it to a vote.
Yes.
Signify approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to terminate the existing agreement with the current financial advisors, and to release a request for proposals for financial advisory services. Dr. Coronado?
Members of the board, Board President, members of the board, so our current financial advisor, the contract expires on August 23rd, there is a 30-day notification period, but we don't have a board meeting in July, so we would have to give them proper notice. But we'd like to recommend that we go out for an RFP for a new financial advisor.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion by Monsieur LoSantos.
Second.
A second by Monsieur Nieto. Do we have any discussion? Okay, we're voting on the consideration for the approval to terminate the existing agreement and the current financial advisors, to release a request for proposals for financial advisory services. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item P, discussion and possible action for the board to, one, consider approval of the qualification statements received for the HVAC improvement projects district-wide, RFQ number 22-06-27, as part of Phase One of the design-build process, and two, approve the ranking criteria and points for the evaluation of requests for proposals, for additional information to be sent out as part of Phase Two of the design-build process for the project. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and members of the board, last month, you had approved to submit an RFQ, or to approve administration to, to issue an RFQ for all of our HVAC, as we discussed in our budget, our budget hearing. And so this is, we received three proposals, so we'd like to move forward with Phase Two with those three. We received three, I guess, qualifications, or three companies for the qualification. The next step would be to issue an RFP, so that they can go ahead and move forward with our HVAC. And so I'd like to recommend approval. And you see the three companies that were listed?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Monsieur LoSantos?
Second.
Second by Monsieur Saita, to consider approval of the qualification statements received for the HVAC improvement projects district-wide, RFQ number 22-06, as part of Phase One. Are we also approving the ranking criteria and points for the evaluation?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have any discussion? Then, let's take it to a vote. Signify approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're halfway there. Item Q.
It's only 8:15.
Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval to hire the services of a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing MEP engineering firm to assist the district as an independent engineer to oversee the design-build construction of the HVAC improvement projects district-wide. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and members of the board, so there are four firms that, we need a third party to oversee the HVAC team that we just, that we're gonna issue an RFP, so we need a third reviewer for that. We have four folks, or four companies, two are out of state, or two out of town, and two are in town. The recommendation is to have half associates? Not half, but, you know, that's the name of the company.
Is there, I know we, I know we approved these individuals, but, but we approved so many, because I think everybody that signed up, we approved them, but is there any kind of supplement, supplemental information with this? Like, as far as a refresher, which, which companies were which? Or no?
So, we have engineers that we have in our vendor list, but in order for the, for HVAC, we need to identify one person specifically for just the HVAC piece, if I'm not mistaken. And then, and then, so, so these, it means, it doesn't mean that we're not gonna do business with any of these four listed, it just means we need to pick one for specifically the HVAC.
I think we'll say we're gonna go in order, or by, you know, assigning, assigning engineers, are they the next in line?
Well, I think with this one, because this project's very large, I mean, that's why I think you would have to look at the engineers and their backgrounds, years of experience.
So just to clarify, the board approved engineers from several disciplines. It was civil, structural, and MEP. And so these are the four MEPs that the board approved under that previous approval. And so out of these, the companies are very capable, that's why we're bringing them to you, because you've already approved them before.
Yes, but we approved like eight or nine, 10, so how'd you come up with these four?
So these four, again, these four are mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering firms. The others were either civil engineering firms, or structural engineering firms. And for this type of project, we would have to approve a mechanical engineering and plumbing firm, and these are the four.
And which one did you all suggest, sir?
So, Dr. Dino, you're recommending half associates, correct?
Half associates.
Okay.
Local company.
So move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion of Monsieur Nieto?
Second.
A second by Monsieur LoSantos, to consider approval to hire the services of a mechanical, electrical, and plumbing EMP engineering firm to assist the district as an independent engineer to oversee the design-build construction of the HVAC improvement projects district-wide. Any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Mons, Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item R, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the final completion of the installation of 24 aluminum light poles with LED light fixtures project at Beatriz G. Garza Middle School. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and members of the board, this just is your approval to close the job. The job was completed, so this just needs your approval to close this specific item.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Monsieur LoSantos?
Second.
Second by Coach Trevino, to consider approval of the final completion of the installation of 24 aluminum light poles with LED light fixtures project Beatriz Garza Middle School. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto? Monsieur Saita?
I have to abstain, because we work with this company.
Aye.
Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Monsieur LoSantos?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Why did it happen?
Because he said you and...
No.
No, he said me, then Monsieur LoSantos.
Okay, well, let's, let's start again.
Let's start again.
Monsieur Nieto, on the approval for the light poles?
Aye.
Aye, and Monsieur Saita abstains. Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez? And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries.
My apologies.
Okay. Item S, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a procurement method of construction for the Westlaco East High School baseball field and Westlaco High School softball field, artificial turf projects. One, board determination of a procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the projects. Two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank the proposals to be received, and, three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Coronado?
Board President and members of the board, so we had discussed upgrades, most of the, most of the fields that are coming in are turf now. In fact, our softball girls, for example, went to another district to practice, just to get used to the turf. So one of the recommendations, I wish we can do all four, both baseball fields and both high school softball fields, and do artificial turf on both. But I ended up choosing the baseball field at Westlaco East and the softball field at Westlaco High. Now, I guess I could be influenced to do both baseball, or both softball, or just keep it as is, but I'd like to do two fields, subject to your approval, but my recommendation is to turf a baseball or softball field at each campus. This year, and then the following year, do another one. So I guess that would be the discussion piece, sir.
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Coach Trevino to approve.
Do we need to do, break them up, or is it worth doing a...
Competitive seal proposal? Correct?
Yes, what's, what number was that?
We're, we're looking at S, and we're looking at the East baseball field and Westlaco High Girls softball field, and we have three items. Are we gonna vote individually for each item, or are we gonna vote collectively for everything? Each item. So the first one we're voting for is the board determination of a procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the projects. Monsieur Nieto, you motion to approve that one?
I'm...
Oh, I mean, Coach Trevino made the motion?
I made the motion.
And we had a second by?
A second.
By Dr. Rodriguez.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any discussion on one? Let's vote on that?
As far as, I do have a question.
Monsieur LoSantos, before we do? Budget-wise, was this budgeted, you know, funding for this project?
This is gonna be about $1.5 million. So, you know, it's just one of those nice-to-have projects that we're gonna have, that we're, you know, the good thing is, is that we can look at, once we start the process, if we deem that we can't afford it, we can put it on the back burner. If not, we can take it out of fund balance, because there's enough there, that we, we rolled enough over that we could pay for this, as well.
The advantage of that, Monsieur LoSantos, having been there before, is that when you put in turf, you eliminate a lot of the upkeep, which adds up.
Right.
So it, it, long-term pays for itself.
That's what, no, in order to, I'm asking this, and it's because I've seen a lot of things come across the table for athletics, you know, no offense to that department, right? But there's a lot of things coming across the table, and I've questioned a lot of, a lot of those. And I just want to make sure that our campuses are also a priority, you know, that, I know we're talking about roofs, we're talking about AC systems for campuses, just want to make sure there's no other issues out there, and those are all being addressed, too. I just want to make sure, because we do, this is quite a, quite a bit of money.
Yes, sir.
So, thank you.
Okay, good point.
Good point.
Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify approval by saying aye, when I call your name. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Coach Trevino? I mean, now, Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
I was gonna skip another one there. Okay, Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. Number two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project, or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank proposals to be received. Dr. Coronado? Well, you already talked about it.
I'll move to, I'll move to approve for administration to rank.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez to have administration rank, and a second by Monsieur LoSantos. Any discussion? Okay, let's take that to a vote. Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Monsieur Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Monsieur LoSantos?
Aye.
Motion carries on number two, and number three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposal.
I'll move to approve the criteria.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez, and a second by Monsieur LoSantos, to approve the criteria and points. Any discussion? Take it to a vote. Monsieur LoSantos, I mean, Monsieur Nieto?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And more?
Aye.
I'm starting to wear down, man.
Okay, refocus now. Item T, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of a procurement method of construction of a new marquee sign for Mary Hole Middle School and the replacement of the digital display boards for the marquee signs at Quare Middle School and the Jo Calvillo Jr. CTE complex. One, board determination of procurement method of construction that would provide the best value to the district for the projects. Two, board determination to retain the authority to rank the proposals to be received for this project or board delegation of their authority to the administration to rank proposals to be received. And three, approval of criteria and points to be used for ranking the proposals. Dr. Coronado?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, when I first got here, um, eleven marquees were down of the, of the nineteen campuses. Um, so right now, um, all of them are fixed with the exception of these. We're, we're still waiting on parts and some just need to be replaced. So these are the marquees that, uh, still, I, I mean, this is our number one method of putting out information. Um, so my recommendation is to approve, um, as stated, um, and that you delegate the authority to the administration to rank the proposals.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nieto?
Correct.
And a second by Mr. Los Santos. To, um, consider the approval of the procurement method of construction for the, uh, new marquee sign at the middle school replacement of digital display boards for the marquee signs at Queer Middle School, Joe Calvillo Junior CTE complex. And, uh, Dr. Coronado included to have the administration rank the proposals to be received in addition to the procurement method of construction that will provide the best value to this district for the projects, okay? Do you wanna include the approval of criteria and points to be used for the ranking?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna put this whole bundle together and, uh, is there any discussion? If not, let's take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ms. Sutaita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item U. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the substantial completion of the design and installation of a security access control system at all middle schools project for two campuses, Beatriz G. Garza Middle School and Central Middle School. Dr. Coronado?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, this, um, this item here, um, requires your approval, um, for us to meet the requirements of the grant that we use to pay for the new control, access control systems for Garza and, and, uh, and Central.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by?
Second.
By Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Los Santos. For the approval of the substantial completion of the design and installation of a security access control systems at all middle schools project for the two campuses, Beatriz Garza Middle School and Central Middle School. Do we have any discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ms. Sutaita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item V. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of allowance expenditure, number one, for the Bobby Lackey Stadium running track replacement project. Dr. Coronado?
Uh, so, uh, Board President and members of the board, this, um, uh, there, there were some extra costs, I, I guess are gonna be related to the track. Uh, when they took off the surface, they found that the, um, I, I guess the asphalt on it was, was, uh, beveled or bowed. Um, so it's gonna require just a, a additional allowance which was built into the budget. Um, just note that the last time that it was worked on was on 2017. Um, so it, it's been some time, but, um, so my recommendation is to approve the allowance.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, we have a motion by, uh, Mr. Los Santos and a second by Mr. Nieto?
Correct.
To consider approval of the allowance expenditure for the Bobby Lackey Stadium running track replacement project. Is there any discussion? There's none. The only thing I'm gonna bring up is that, uh, Coach Trevino brought up his concern and, uh, will this, um-
Correct?
The correct measures they're gonna take on the asphalt be something that's gonna secure any flooding that might, uh, com- compromise that, uh, work that we're putting into it?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Coach, so yeah, so we're, they're pretty much laying out a brand new track from scratch. And so all the asphalt underneath has been compacted, it's already laid out, and they're just letting it cure, uh, sit there for about twenty-eight days or so. So, so the warranty on this product is ten years from, uh, from Bynon, and so we're gonna be monitoring that. But yeah, so any, any flooding that we had before, when they removed the, uh, the existing track, uh, we saw the problems underneath.
My, my, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I'm just following up with what Coach brought up before. Is, is, is there a sealer that they can use to protect it from, uh, cause with time, you know, that, that rubber will, will, you know, r- rise or be, uh, compromised when there's weed growth and things like that. We, we've seen that. So there's an opening and, you know, water will find the least path of resistance to, to anything. So is there, is, are they gonna take care of those things with some kind of sealer to take care of our investment?
Yes, we're, we're monitoring that. Yeah, so we'll make sure that everything is addressed.
So you, you, for me, here we go, you know, here we go again. It, and I can almost, I haven't been out there at the track, but is it the, the section that needs that or that had, was compromised? Is it the section where that flooding takes place right there off of, uh, Pike and, and Westgate? Is it that corner?
Well, actually, the, the compromised area is over to the south side of the track. Most of it, uh, most of the problems we're seeing on the south side of the track.
It's actually the, the first turn.
Okay.
That is the area that was-
The first and then, you know, the second turn over on the visitor's side.
Correct.
Breaks up.
We're seeing a lot of problems there.
But now also with the parking lot, the new parking lot has good drainage also. So a lot of that rain, they will stay there, now be able to exit, you know, on the new parking lot.
The other thing to, uh, address the, the flooding there is that the city of West is working on our big Garza campus-
Oh, yes.
And using that as a, a regional detention facility as well. So they're moving forward on that and that's, should alleviate a lot of that flooding. That's the intent.
What about the warranty issues? I know you said right now ten years, but I know the, the track there hasn't been there more than six, seven years. So what about the warranty from that project? Is it, did it get voided or what happened there?
So what was installed in 2017 was just an overlayment.
Okay.
It was just pretty much a top layer. Nothing was removed. The existing track remained. Uh, and so the warranty, when they responded to warranty, uh, concerns that we had, they did point out, look, this is the top layer, you can tell it's just a thin layer that, that bubbled up, we'll address that. But where, there were areas where you could tell it was a thicker layer of track, they were pointing out that it was coming from underneath, which is deeper, right? So they were saying, we'll, we'll honor the warranty for this spots, but not the others. We can't. Uh, and, and again, that was a five-year warranty. Again, it was just a top layer that they poured on there because of, of, of budget cost at the time. At the time, we didn't work on the, on the, uh, field itself, we replaced the turf, uh, and the track was just, you know, some repairs, if you will, right?
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, okay. Any more discussion? Okay, let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ms. Sutaita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. W. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the final amended budgets for the general fund and the debt service fund for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Dr. Coronado?
Uh, Board President and members of the board, um, this allows the final amended budget so that we can close out our accounts, uh, by function.
Move to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by?
Second.
By, uh, Mr. Los Santos. For the, uh, board to consider the approval of the final amended budgets for the general fund and debt service fund for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. Do we have any discussion? Okay, take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying aye when I call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Ms. Sutaita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Los Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item X. Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of revisions to the Westaco ISD compensation plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Dr. Coronado?
Alrighty, here we go. All right, so Board President and members of the board, um, you have the, the final, uh, you have actually the ones with the red lines on it as well, the copies, so you can see the changes to the compensation plan, um, and the stipend schedule. Now, again, the, um, the first part of the, uh, the compensation plan, um, was the salary piece and all of the pay raises. And then towards the last part, you'll see the academic stipend schedule and then you'll also see the athletic stipend schedule that we discussed, uh, previously. Uh, we have vetted, um, both academic and athletic stipend schedules, um, with, um, uh, our, our directors, our, uh, two head coaches, our, our, or athletic director and athletic, uh, coordinators at both high schools. Um, and they approve of the stipend schedule as, as you see. Um, and you can see a lot of the red lines and where we kinda made some changes, um, but, uh, subject to your questions.
I don't have any questions. I, I went through them.
Um- What about, oh. The stipend, what was the increase in the stipend for the, uh, teachers that have a master's in the core content area? What was that? What page is that on?
I, I believe it-
Two thousand core area and one thousand if they have a regular master's.
One thousand general and then two thousand core.
Core area.
Two thousand.
For two thousands. We did increase, um-
Page, page twenty-one.
I, I will say that we, we need to do a lot more work on the academic stipends. Um, and I think as we, um, as we grow, um, we can take a harder look, um, at our stipend schedules. Um, I think our athletic, uh, stipends can level off at this point. We're, we're the highest, clearly the highest in the valley. Um, I really think that our, we need to take a harder look at our academic stipend, given the timeframe that we've had to work with the budget, um, at least since I've been here. Um, I, I think we've made some great strides in our overall compensation plan, um, and so-
And, and, yeah, and I know we've talked about it before, but that's my goal. I wanna be the highest in the valley for academics and stipends.
And there was, there was a lot of UIL teams and those coaches that bear well this year in advancing to, uh, the different levels.
Yes. And I saw, and I saw their amounts too, so yes. Yeah, that's something we definitely need to keep an eye on and hopefully throughout this year with increased enrollment and the financial management, we can do that maybe next year, look at that.
Yeah, I, I agree and, uh, that, that is something that, uh, that I, I want to look at as well.
I have several concerns and quite a bit, not quite a bit, but if, if you look at page twenty-six on the compensation plan and it deals with demotions, reassignments to a lower pay grade, demotion. And on page twenty-six B, it talks about poor performance. And number one says, "The pay reduction will take effect with the following school year for a contract employee." So that means that if we reassign somebody, uh, for poor performance and they're demoted or they're not, you know, they're reassigned, we cannot change their, their salary until a whole year later. And I don't agree with this because if you're being demoted for poor performance, there's a reason why. And so I don't wanna wait a whole year later.
It should be immediate.
It should be immediate because if you look over at, um, the pay reduction for non-contract employees, well, that's immediate. So, but for contract, it's not. And it's not just, well, because we just felt like it, well, it, there was, there's something involved that made the demotion occur.
You, you, uh, you know, policy, whatever the case may be, expectations, they weren't met, I mean, who knows? But it, it, it makes sense that, is, what, what is legally preventing us from doing that, from removing that so that that way, when there is a demotion, it's someone-
Legal? There's nothing preventing us?
Why can it be immediate?
If it's in policy or-
Because in the real world, well, that's what-
So we would have to change the compensation plan. Is it anywhere else in our policy, in the board policy, other than in the compensation plan that says we can't take their salary?
It's not state mandates, in other words, that are saying that we have to do it.
But there's a contract though. We, we have, we have a, the, the contract is binding.
But if they break the contract by not performing duties and violating policies?
For good cause.
Right.
And normally the contract is year by year, correct?
That's correct.
But if you can also terminate or, or a contract for good cause and reassign them.
So, so the prac- the common practice, so, so the, the common practice is that in, in all districts, at least that I've been associated with, and I'm sure, uh, if we did some, some digging, you would see that, that it, it's a common practice for employees that get reassigned to honor one year of salary. And what happens normally is, is that that following year, they, they leave. Um, now, if, um, I, I, I'd like to say that's the right thing to do. Um, the, the problem sometimes is that, that as a district with your turnover, you forget, um, you know, and, and I, I would, I'll be the first to say that there, there have been errors where, well, that, that employee has kept the same salary year after year after year after even being reassigned. Those are errors that, that we need to correct. Um, and, and so, um, but I, I-
Well, you beat me to the punch. Okay, that's where I was going.
Okay.
You know?
I, I, so I-
Prior to you arriving and us being on here, that's the case. Where people were demoted and kept their salaries for years.
Um, and, and I, I firmly believe that, that if you're reassigned into a position or the position changes, um, that, that we honor the salary for one year. Um, it, it's, we're still dealing with people. We're still dealing with their quality of life. Um, and just because they didn't fit in one place doesn't mean they won't fit in another place.
No, exactly.
But, but we don't want to right away go from, okay, you went from, you went from a teacher to a bus driver, you went from fifty-three thousand to twenty dollars an hour. We don't wanna do that either. So if it's significant, you, you know, that, then, I, I'm not saying that we're an employment agency, I'm, I'm just trying to honor the decency of a human being, you, you know? And, and so I, I think we, we continue to honor one year and, and after that, we have a system in place, which we have now, um, to monitor and to track, okay, your year's up and this is your new salary before we issue the contract or before we issue any type of employment agreement. Uh, that hasn't been done in the past. I, I can tell you that, right? We have several employees in this district that get paid, um, that never got a reduction in pay. I, I will be the first one to admit that and I'm well aware of that. Um, and we're working on, on those right now. Um, but in, in more, more recent times, at least within the last thirty days and some of our reassignments, um, my, my recommendation is to honor their salary for one year and then give them another contract, um, if with, they do well in that position at their, a new salary, um, based on whatever pay grade they're assigned to.
Oh, I understand, sir, but like I said, I, I've, I've known that since I, since I first stepped foot here as a board member in December of 2020, um, of tho- of those instances. And I think that it's kind of awkward where we say, okay, here it is again, it's being highlighted and, well, let's wait till the, the following year then to take action when this person's already cheated the system out for years, these people. Um, because they, they knew they got demoted, they knew they were supposed to get a reduction and they never did and they never said anything. And meanwhile, everybody else is, is, is pulling their weight, performing according performing according to policy and, and according to expectations from the administration and also the community. I just, I'm sorry, I just don't, I, I personally don't think, because in the, I say, the real world, outside of the school system and the laws that regulate us and hold us, people don't have that luxury. I think if people that are watching, people that pay taxes, people that work at any job, just drive down Texas, drive down any street here in, in Wesaco, and any of those businesses, they don't have that luxury where they make mis, severe, severe, serious mistakes, and most times, they don't get demoted, they just get fired. And, and most times, they don't, or they get demoted and say, well, we're still going to keep you at a different pay, and we're going to just pay you another year. There's expectations, and there's expectations by the community, there's expectations by the school district, there's state laws and policies and things that are in place. You break them, and, and yet you get another free ride for a whole other year at, at a lesser duty, because I would think that that, that hurts morale, and that, that must hurt morale as well with other administrations that are, that are doing the right thing and day in and day out. And here they are, have to see this other individual for a year, because everybody in the district knows exactly what's, what, what goes on. There's no secret here in Wesaco ISD. It gets out of central office faster than you can put it on paper. So, the reality, and, yeah, and they know it's true.
I, and, sir, I, I don't disagree with you. Everything that you're saying, I agree with. I, I, I will just say that the common practice in education, right, at, at least if you're an educator, right, if you're considered a professional employee, or, or a credentialed employee, rather, the common practice has been to keep your salary for one year. Now, what happened prior to April 4th, 2022? Sir, I, I can't explain that. I can say that we have employees that, after, after my review, we have employees in this district that, as a district, we continue to pay their salary, which is wrong. So, I need the opportunity to correct that. And, and so-
That was going to be my question, you're going to be a correct-
Yes, I, I need, I need the opportunity to correct it for those employees. And so, so I guess what I, what I, I guess what I'm asking for i- is allow me an opportunity to correct the employees that have been at the same salary for more than a year, however, to, to maintain our, our status quo regarding an employee demoted and allow them to keep their salary for one year. Now, I will tell you this, again, I can't speak for anything prior to April 4th, 2022. To me personally, if there's a wrongdoing of an employee, they're not going to get demoted, they're going to get terminated. We have far too many employees that, or, or too few employees in here that should not even be here. And I think everyone knows that. So why we keep them, for, for one, is, is beyond me. So, and, and so, so just understand that I'm, I'm going to do the right thing, even though it's the hard thing to do. And so, we have submitted, we have requested, you're going to see some significant differences in, in what we call a file review system, starting in January, for all teachers. I, I mean, it's just, and for all professionals and for all employees, we're going to start this early, you know, and so, this is not about demoting. This is about paying people to do the right thing. I, I believe in, in, in paying people what they deserve, but I also expect them to do their job. You, you know, you want to be treated as a professional, then act like it. So, so I, I'm all for paying teachers and, and bus drivers and maintenance and, and I'll be the first one to say, and contrary to popular belief, moving to central office is not a promotion. Nobody wants to work with me every day, right? It's not a promotion. So, I, I can guarantee you that the hard work and the effort, and to me, the promotion is being with kids. Being on a campus is the pride of the district. So if you're taken away from your campus, you got demoted. Unless you're one of my 10 district leadership team members, that's not a promotion. And, and so, I, I want to make it very clear and very public that moving to central office is not a promotion, unless you're a direct report to the superintendent.
Thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Coronado, because that's been, you know, mentioned a lot. Well, central office, it's not a promotion. It's hard to believe the perception is you go there, it's a promotion, but that's the way it is. And you said about common practice. This is not common practice, but common practice is to terminate or non-renew somebody who has been charged with misconduct, whether it's sexual harassment, whether it's, you know, whatever it is. Common practice is to terminate or non-renew an employee that's on a contract if there's some type of misconduct, and for good cause. So like you said, we shouldn't even have people on the payroll if there is already misconduct, but we might right now, we do. So, to further my question, you're saying a year is, is common practice. Can we do something where instead of a year, okay, you know what, we're going to give you six months? Because it, a year is a whole academic year later. I, I don't know, I just, it, it, they shouldn't even be on the payroll, in my mind. And it's a, like, it's a morale issue to a lot of people. Like, let's say you were a, I don't know, a principal, and now you're demoted somewhere else, you're still getting paid as a principal, but you're doing no duty as a principal. It's, it's not right. Can we, can we think about maybe not a year?
Well, I, I, the only reason we say years is because it, you know, education moves in cycles, and, and so, and, and I, I just think that-
Or the, the end of the academic year?
Well, well, that's when our contracts are. So, our, our contracts are based on, on academic years. And so, the, here, here's what I'd like to add. Not all, so, situations may be the same, but circumstances are always different in a situation. So, we have to consider the infraction of an employee. If, if it's habitual, is, is the infraction habitual? I, I don't believe in a three strikes, you're out. I, I mean, it, you, you know, if, if a student cusses out a teacher, well, that's one strike. No, you're, that's, that's the infraction. And, and so, same thing with an employee, depending on the infraction, you know, if it's, if it's deliberate, careless, reckless, somebody got hurt, then, then, then we move to terminate. You know, if it's, you know, if they, if they touch a kid, they hurt a kid, they hurt a human being, I think they should be terminated, on the spot. We'll deal with the legal expenses later. That, that's, that's my, that's my feeling, and I know that's firm, and I know it's hard. But I also think that if there's, if they're just not doing their job, okay, so their, half their kids failed the STAR test, do we terminate them? No, we don't terminate them. We, we educate them. We help them, we build them, we support them, we give them a change of scenery. So, so I think that, that we have, we can't just create a blanket for, for everything that we're doing and, and create a one-size-fits-all system. So, so I do think, you, you know, again, I'm going to go back to, you, you, we, we have 20, nearly 2,200 employees. People want to be in Wesaco ISD. People want to be here. So, so I think that's the expectation that we need to create right now. We, we have a very fam, you know, a very familiar culture right now. At, at the same time, there are things that sometimes we don't do, we don't do right, or we don't do well. But I, I just, I guess I'm just asking, just give me an opportunity with this compensation plan for this year. If, if I fail, then, then that's another course of action. I'm not going to fail.
Now, Dr. Coronado, number two says, because I, human, non-contract employees are also humans and also have needs, but we're making their reassignment effective, but we're not doing it to contract employees. So it's okay for us to do it to non-contract employees.
So, we, I would tell you that we don't have a situation, as far as I know, and, and Dora Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not have a situation that I know of, at least this year, where a contracted employee has been demoted, and that has happened. Now, we have had professional contract employees that we have demoted, most recently, and, and so, and prior to me getting here, that there has been no pay change. But in, in your situation, in the, in the case that you're bringing up, for, in terms of an hourly, most of those hourly folks that have had, had an infraction, they haven't been demoted, they've been terminated.
So, so then we do terminate them, but it's harder for contract people to terminate it?
So, so the issue, excuse me, Dr. Coronado, the board president, members of the board, the issue comes down to federal wage and hour laws. So with the Fair Labor Standards Act, we can't by law keep a non-contractual or an hourly employee paid. We can only pay them what they actually work. And, and that's how it works with suspensions as well, and that's why you have the difference. Because with a contracted employee, a credentialed employee, we can't continue to do so. But an hourly employee, the federal law does not allow us to.
Okay, the federal law does not allow us to with a non-contract employee?
But, Dr., okay, Dr. Coronado, so say, for example, you reassign a principal to assistant principal, but before contracts, right? Contracts come in, occur in April. So say you reassign because of poor performance in February, right? By April, that person knows already that they're not going to be principal the following year, like Mark was saying. So can you reduce their pay? Because now, when they, when they sign the contract, they're going to sign an assistant principal contract. They're not going to sign a principal contract.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
You are correct.
Now, it's difficult when it's in the summer, because they sign a contract in April-
Right.
-for principal for a certain salary, even though they're getting reassigned, and, but they sign a contract saying this is how much they're going to get paid this particular year.
And this is why the, the non-renewal process needs to start in January-
Right.
-and, and not in April or May.
Right.
So, you, you know, I, that's, that's why it's so important to have a system in place. It, it's, I mean, it doesn't take, to know you're effective, we, we know by Christmas whether you're effective or not.
Right.
I mean, that, that's pretty clear. If you've been a teacher for a long time, or if you've been a principal for a long time, it doesn't take a long time to know you're not going to make it.
Correct.
You know, and so, now it kicks in some, some quick actions on, what are we going to do to support the teacher to be successful? And, and, and let's, let's be, let's be real here and, and say, you know, not everybody can, can be an optometrist, not everybody can be a lawyer, not everybody can be a teacher, you know, not everybody could be a soldier. So, so sometimes it's, you know, you try it and you move on, or, or not. So, sometimes we have to make that decision for you, and, and so, or, or help guide you. So, the, these are tough. These, these are tough decisions to, to make. The hardest decision to make, I think, is, one, teachers right now are, we're, we're losing a profession of, of teachers. We're losing a profession of administrators. And our, if you think about the, the low turnout of teachers, those are our future administrators. So, so we're losing a generation of teachers and staff. We have to take care of what we have. Now, if it's flagrant, you touch a kid, you, you do these things, you know, I, again, I, I'm not into the demotion piece. I, I'd rather, if you're going to be here, be here. If you're not, then don't. And, and I know that's cold, but that's just kind of how I see things. And, and so, I, I just think that, that, that we honor, we honor that one year in accordance with the compensation plan. I stand by the compensation plan, and I, I, I recommend that you approve it.
Just to clarify, you said it's one year, but actually, I was getting closer now. It says, it's going to take effect, like Mr. Nieto says, with the following school year. So it doesn't actually mean from November to November, you're going to get paid?
That's correct.
It's just till the end of the year.
It's contract.
Okay, till the end of the year, and then you school year starts, that's when you get your new, like you said, just to clarify. So, I mean, that, that sounds...
All right.
Another concern I had, Dr. Coronado, and I know that I've mentioned it to you before in our conversations, but just to get clarification, because I've been told two different things from two different superintendents on, or interims from, in the past, before you were here. In policy, DC, uh, DC local, DCE local, that policy talks about other types of contracts, DCE local.
Right.
And it says, "The board will approve a list of non-chapter 21 positions." So, I remember Dr. Gonzalez was here, and I asked her, she said, "Okay, well, I think it's these people." And, you know, "Give me the list." Then, Dr. Valdez was here, she says, "It's the job, the 200 job pay grade." And then I talked to you, and you said, "No, that's not the way it is." So I would like to just clarify, now that we're together as a board, what is that list of non-chapter 21 positions?
So, the chapter 21 is, is governed by the TEC, which is what your, your board policy legal is. So, chapter 21 contracts are required for teachers, counselors, principals, and, and librarians. So that's required because they have direct contact with kids. Everyone else, right, can choose to be on a chapter 21 contract. Here's an example. Our two assistant supes for school leadership, they are on a chapter 21 contract. Do they have to be? No. However, but because we honor their credentials and their certificates from the state, right, we provide them with a chapter 21 contract. Amerco is not an educator, but he's on staff. He does not have a chapter 21 contract, right? He, and he, even though he has credentials, but their, his credentials are not, are not governed by the Texas Education Code. So, now, we don't have a list of, we don't have a list of positions outside of the teachers, principals, librarians, and principals, and-
Counselors and occupational therapists, anybody who's certified or licensed, I know, it's beyond us.
We don't have a list of, of folks outside that. Now, aligning it to pay grade, it's apples and coconuts, right? So, it, it's, it, it has nothing to, one has nothing to do with the other. A, a director of instruction, for example, we can honor their credentials by providing them a chapter 21 contract or not? HR, Dora Lisa, longtime administrator, right? HR, she doesn't have a chapter 21 contract. So, we are really kind of all over the place when it comes to contracts. And again, I, I just, I've been here less than 90 days, so I, I just need a little bit more time to, to get some of our contract stuff situated and bring to the board. So I can tell you that next year, I can, I'll, you know, we, we need a lot of policy changes, too. And so, every month, I'll probably be bringing up some policy issues that need, we need an FOD local, for example, right? We, we need to redefine our EIC. We need to redefine, so there are some policies that are out there that we need to be redefined, but I, I just need a little bit more than 90 days that I've been here to bring some of these policies.
Yes, thank you. And now that you say that, I'm going to bring up one more, because I want to clarify, because the word out there has been, well, people are just being placed into positions, and they're not being interviewed, and they're just going, and have you guys, and I looked into the policy of DC legal, which talks about the posting of vacancies or new positions. And it does say there that if you, if the position requires a certificate or a license, like an occupational therapist, or, then it, it is not required. It is, it is required, it is required to post the vacancy. Like, for example, you have a principal opening, you need a certificate, you need to post the vacancy, which is what we've done, right? But if it's a director, like you say, if it's a director and that does not need to have a certificate or certification, then you don't need to post it, and you can reassign people as you feel is needed, correct?
That's correct, because policy DK local allows a superintendent to reassign personnel as I see fit.
Okay. And that's what I want to clarify, because, you know, I've been getting a lot of that, and I'm sure all of us have. Well, you know, people are being reassigned, and maybe there aren't interviews, or some of the positions are being interviewed, and that's the reason why, because the polit, that policy, it tells us what vacancies need to be posted, if they are requiring somebody with a certification or a license or not. It, it's all in policy. And I just want to make it clear that we are leaving that up to you.
I follow policy.
Yes. So just want to make that clear.
We're not going to be on Channel 5 or any other news channel, because I didn't, so.
Yes. So, just, just to make that clear. But, but I do see here that the pay grade, the 100s, now that we're talking about the compensation plan, this is the education and administrative professional salary. These are all the 100s. So all the positions here are education administrative, correct? And if I look at the Texas Education Code 21.003, educational administrators are supposed to have their certifications, because they're, they're trainers or trainees of teachers, they're administrators in the educational field. So, all these positions here in the 100s, if I look at them, it's the coordinators, the counselors, facilitators, assistant principals, specialists. All these people are people who have their certificate with ESPEC. So all these people have, are, are in the 100s.
Well, occupational therapists have a national certification.
And license, it's either a certificate or license-
Okay.
-by the Texas Education Code. So all these people have either a certificate or a license in the, by the Texas Education Code, they're in the 100s. So yes, these are your chapter 21 people.
Well, we don't, but we don't have that-
But we don't call that.
We don't have that in policy, though. We don't have a list of, of professions or positions that, that qualify for chapter 20, or, the board hasn't provided a list, or I, or, in the past, right, again, that, that's, this is, this is something that needs to be in policy, which we don't have.
Right.
That the board, that, that the administration recommends, these are the positions that require a chapter 21 contract. We don't have that.
No, but the Texas Education Code does, for administrate, administrative.
Administrator.
Administrator, administrator. Right. So that's what I'm saying. Everybody here on usual, everybody I see here on the 100s, um-
Now, if I, if I, if, I, I could be wrong, I, I, but OTs, PTs, I know da, educational diagnosticians are, have an ESPEC, but speech, your SLPs, your OTs, your licensed schools, your LSSPs-
They don't need to have 21.
So, so they're not in the TEC?
Right. But they, they, they are belonging with education-
They have a licensure.
Right, because they have a licensure. And then the 200s, just to make sure that we're all looking at them correctly, the 200s are more like the, the business people, right? People that don't need to have a, a certificate or a license to have this job, to be in this pay grade. They're, they don't need an educator's license or any kind of other license, like the occupational therapy, and no certificate or license in the 200s. So like the coordinator, teacher incentive allotment, well, that's under business, I get, yeah, it's not under education.
I guess, you know, that's kind of the, I mean, I'm going to cut straight to the chase. There's, the community, when I say community, I mean our staff, because they also live in, they live here in Wesaco, they work here in the school district, and they pay taxes here. So, sometimes they have questions, and they're kind of a little bit confused. We get calls as, as board members, and they say, "Well, we heard that TOSO just got put into a position, it wasn't posted, they didn't, they didn't interview, nobody else got an opportunity." I guess, the discussion you all are having is clarifying that you're using a local policy that's in place, that gives you the authority to select at will for those positions that fall under that policy, on who you feel fit. And that's, that's just kind of, to put it out there, and to be transparent, those positions that, that they're seeing, that these individuals, well, they were here before, and now they're here, and they have this title and et cetera, whatnot, they, they assume that the board has something to do with it, and we didn't. It's you're making those choices, and you-
It's my call.
Yeah, it's your call with your staff that selected those individuals, and we have nothing to do with that. And, and, and that's, that's, that's just kind of, I'll cut straight to the chase, because that's kind of the situation that's going on. I'm getting phone calls, and they're asking me about positions that I didn't know were on there, or I didn't know where, where people were placed there, and, and I told them, they didn't come to the board. So, and, and when they hear that, they're, they're kind of shocked, because before, everything came to the board. And so, that's just a situation that we're in right now. I guess, just to clarify out there, you're making those choices based off of your professional experience and, and judgment, and we, we have nothing to do with that.
And that's under, that's under practice. That's, that is, and, and again, but you-
It's just, it's a shock for the, for the people. I mean, for some, because they're not used to that.
But as the board, you've granted me that authority by policy. And, and so, I'm just, I just choose to exercise- And, and so, I'm just, I just choose to exercise that policy.
Right, but, but nobody chose to do it before. Everybody before ran through the board. And that's what I'm trying to say, and that's a little bit different now, because now people are seeing daves and seeing new titles. And, and I, I'm, I tell them, I just, I know just as much as you do, and, and about that. And so, because you're exercising that policy, you saw that, that's in policy, we've, we've granted, that's been there forever, but nobody's ever used it, you're using it. And that's kind of what I, I wanted, I mean, I kind of see where you're kind of going, I don't know if that's where you're going, but I just want to be transparent that those decisions are yours.
And, and, and I would say that, anybody, and again, I, I have, and I've said this very clear to all of the staff, I have no issues with people calling board members. I, I wish they would call me first.
Right.
Because the first thing you're gonna do is call me anyway. So, uh, you know, I mean, every time somebody calls you, you call me.
Right.
So, just, let's cut to the chase, just call me, D. Coronado at WISD.us, you know, so just, or call, call Marty. I, I will, if I'm in the office, I'll, I'll answer the phone.
And I told people that, he did, he says to call him directly and, and don't feel intimidated, don't feel you'll be targeted. You got questions, call him.
You know, it may take me a day or two, but I, I will answer their questions, you know? But again, if they complain to you, right, you're, they're still coming to me. So, let's just, let's cut out the middleman.
And Dr. Dr. Coronado, on your behalf, in the past, several superintendents ago, that superintendent reassigned, whether it was assistant principal or principal, because he had that authority to do that. You know, and, and this, you know, as, as a, as a superintendent, you should have that latitude to make sure your team is going the right direction.
Right.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, we, we, we don't hold any staff member, and then, some people don't understand this. People in the community think that school boards run the school district and they don't, because they don't have the qualifications or experience, but we, we only have one employee. And, and that employee is a superintendent, as a board. Everybody else is yours and, and we hold you fully accountable. So, it would be unfair for us to choose who you feel is your cabinet. It would be unfair for me to choose, or the board to choose, uh, campus principals and, and their staff, and, and then hold them accountable. And that's happened in the past, that's, that's happened in the past, where they got people showed up that they didn't want or didn't need, and they had to, uh, adjust and incorporate them somehow, sometimes it worked and sometimes it didn't. So, so people need to understand that community, especially now with all the changes. We haven't had a workshop. So, they don't know, they hear these things, but the fact is, is that you and the rest of your team decide on what needs to be done in the day-to-day operations. And, and at the end of the day, we're just the eyes and ears for the community and make sure that we're following policy, we're being fair and equitable, and that's just, that's just the case in the situation. And I've explained that to, to some people that have called me and phone calls from people asking why the changes and, and the certain titles, and maybe sometimes they weren't posted and hired. I said, "Well, because he has the authority to do that, him and his team are, are basing it based on."
Like he said, if things don't work out, then we're holding him accountable.
He's the only employee we can.
Because it's him.
It's, you know, and, and I accept that responsibility. And, and you know, I, I, I don't know if there's any cowboy fans here, I'm not, but, you know, but I do like, I, I, you know, I do like what Bill Parcell said, you know? He, he says, "If you want me to cook, at least let me buy some of the groceries."
Right.
You know, I, I mean, you're holding me accountable.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so let me buy some of the groceries here, so that I can make things happen. And, and so, I, I thank you for that and, and I, I, I still, I, I still stay in touch with all of you at le- I.
Yes, you do.
I, I think there isn't a day that goes by, even on a Saturday or Sunday, that I'm still talking to a board member. So, I, I'd like to say that, you know, and I appreciate your support. And, and, uh, and I'll apologize for taking liberties of the policy. Um, but, uh, but, but part of me, I, I won't apologize or I'll be unapologetic about doing what's right for this district. Uh, and, and so, I'm invested here.
It's just good to make it clear, so everybody understands, so the communication is there, and this is why this is happening. Because when some, when there's doubts in the air and you don't clear that fog up, things get twisted around.
I understand.
So, that's why I brought it up, so everybody can hear the same thing that we're hearing, that it, it's in your hands and, and we're, you know, we trust you that you're going to, the groceries you buy are gonna give us a great outcome.
If not, they get returned.
And it's just, yeah, it's just being transparent with, with, you know, people are shocked when they ask me and they call me and they say, "Well," they ask questions, and I tell them, "Well, the board is supporting the soup 100%." But also, he has a 707 block that's supporting him 100% to do what he needs to do to make things right. We just left a, a different time in the past and then now we're going a different direction. We have new policies, new things that we're putting into place. Um, they, there's, eh, you know, how do I put it in a way where we're looking at making, uh, taking actions? And I think the board, all in general, maybe they, they will agree with me, that we're all taking actions that, that, that affect everybody equitably, the whole group, not just a certain few. And so, that's the way we're moving forward and we're supporting you. And that's, that's why I wanted to talk about this, so that people can hopefully talk amongst their friends, go tell their other coworkers, you, you, you have a 707 support. And you and your staff to do what you need to do to get us back on the right track and, and, uh, and, and we're getting there fast and we're moving quick, I know it's only been 90 days, it's probably felt like longer than that, huh? But, uh.
I'll get some sleep in there after July.
Been a lot of calls, a lot of emails and a lot of, and, you know, even meetings. And I know you discuss, you, you talk to every single board member, uh, on a topic. And I think, I appreciate that and I respect that a lot, because I think everybody else does too. It's not just a few, it's everyone, so everybody gets a call that day. And, and everybody gets informed, so. I just wanted to put that out there, so they can, people can, can, I don't want to say stop calling me, but about that topic right there, is that I have nothing to do with the hiring process, so.
But Dr. Coronado, it's like, when we, we were having a conversation, that leaders, leaders should be able to work with all kinds of people.
Exactly.
You know, and, and you mentioned also, when we first started, that you were here to support the principals and your directors and, uh, make them become better.
Right.
You know, and if you're a good leader, regardless who you get, as assistant principal or teacher, whatever, you have to make adjustments, if you're that leader that you should be at that campus.
No, no employee Wesaco ISD should be making decisions based on what they think the board's gonna feel or how they're gonna react. You need to be doing what's best for your career and for those students, for your campus, your department, whatever the case may be. And I'm not gonna lie and sugarcoat it, that culture's been here for a long time. That culture should already be broken by now, and for those that haven't gotten the picture, they should. Just do your job, be effective, do the best decision for yourself, your career and your kids, or your employees, or whatever the case may be, and that's your boss. You, you have one boss and that's him right there. Uh, and, and then we're his boss, but, right? But, uh, but that should, that doesn't play down, trickle down to you. And that's kind of the message here with the hiring. We, I, people couldn't believe it when I said, "I, I don't, I'm not involved, I don't know, I don't have the information, I don't have the facts for you." I, I don't know what, uh, decisions are being made and, uh, because he's making the decisions with the staff based on what's best for the district. And so, that's just something I wanted to put out there as well, too, is we're gonna close up and be out for a whole month, is that strong message, because they're gonna see more changes, like you said, as we continue into 22, 23. And it's all in the best interest of the district, and really, the, the kids, it's all about the kids now. You'll see that with our finances and our refocus, and you'll see that now with the hiring and the high standards that are being asked, you know, what's being asked of staff.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor already, right?
Yes, sir.
I don't think so.
No?
I don't think we have one.
Okay.
Motion to approve the compensation.
I'll second. We had a motion.
Motion.
To approve, and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Uh, let's take it to a vote. Thinking of your approval, but saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saito?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Y. Discussion on possible action for the board to consider approval to adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund budgets for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Dr. Coronado.
Board President and, uh, members of the board, first, I, I want to say thank you for, um, for everything. This last conversation was, was deep. I know also that for you and the public, that there were a lot of items, um, on this agenda and it was lengthy. Um, so, thank you for your patience. Uh, I, I think by allowing us to do it this way, um, we, we've really knocked out two board meetings, um, in one month, uh, because we're not having a July one. So, I, I want to thank you for, for allowing us to put these items on the agenda, um, and, and for us to be able to discuss th- these items, so, I, I want to thank you for that. Um, the, the last item on this agenda, um, uh, is to approve the, uh, the general budget, uh, for school year 22, 23, um, as discussed, uh, in the budget hearing.
Motion approved. Second. Motion by, uh, Mr. Lo Santos. And a second by Dr. Rodriguez. To have the board consider approval to adopt the district's general fund and debt service fund budgets for the fiscal year 2022, 23. Do we have any discussion? Take it to a vote. Thinking of your approval, but saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saito?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now, we go to item 12. Closed meeting to discuss. A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. One, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on certified professional personnel. Two, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on resignations and retirements of certified professional personnel. Three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. A, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation on renewal of probationary contract for certified professional personnel for the 2022, 2023 school year. B, discussion regarding superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal at Rolosa Rudi Silva Elementary School. C, discussion regarding the superintendent's recommendation on the reassignments of professional staff based on the new organizational chart. And B, consultation with attorney regarding a pending or contemplated litigation. B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the Wesaco ISD, under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with chapter 551, other Texas government code, Texas government code 551.071. The time now is 9:25, and we will go into closed session.
Thank you.
The time now is ten fifty.
Nope.
And we have reconvened an open meeting. Item A, possible action if necessary on item discussed in closed meeting. One, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation on employment of certified professional personnel. Dr. Coronel.
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend the employment of the certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Nieto. Let's take that to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Jacque Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Santos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, item two, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent's recommendation on resignations and retirements of certified professional personnel. Dr. Coronel.
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend the resignations and retirements of certified professional personnel as discussed in closed session.
So move. Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nieto and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Let's take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Santos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent recommendation on probationary contract for certified professional personnel for the 2022-2023 school year. Dr. Coronel.
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend the probationary contracts for certified professional personnel for 22-23 school year as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve. Got a motion by Dr. Rodriguez?
Second.
Second by Mr. Santos. Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Santos?
Aye.
And motion carries. Item four, discussion of possible action regarding superintendent recommendation for the position of principal at Rodolfo Rudy Silva Elementary School. Dr. Coronel.
Board President and members of the board, I'd like to recommend Dr. Catalina Lopez, who's in our audience, the position of principal at Rodolfo Rudy Silva Elementary School.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Santos and a second by Dr. Rodriguez. Take it to a vote. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Staita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Santos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations. And item five, discussion regarding the superintendent recommendation on the reassignments
I'd like to recommend my reassignment of the professional staff based on the new organizational chart for the following year.
Move to approve. Okay, we have a motion by Dr. Rodriguez?
Second.
A second by Mr. Nieto. Signify your approval by saying I want to call your name. Mr. Nieto?
Aye.
Mrs. Saita?
Aye.
Coach Trevino?
Aye.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And Mr. Lo Santos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, adjournment. Don't move. Got a motion and the time now is ten fifty-four. We are adjourned.